That all three can be of the same political parties is ludicrous. This is naked attempt to hijack the county election board, and this cannot be allowed. Our election board needs to be as free of partisan bickering as humanly possible, and this proposal does the complete opposite of that. Please vote against this, turning the election board into a partisan body. I also have an email from Claudia Glennon. I am a Luzern County resident, saving my objection to the proposed ballot question, charter change regarding the structure of the Luzern County Election Board. The election board must stay nonpartisan. My husband and I voice a no vote on the proposed ballot initiative to increase to three or any additional number of county board members or appointees to Luzern County Election Board. We also vote, voice no. That's regards to solicitors, that's the other question. I also have an email from Denise Williams to Luzern County Council members. This letter is regards to the proposed amendment to Article 8, Section 8.04, Home Rule Charter. Since January of 2012, our county board of elections duties have been fulfilled by what appears to me as nonpartisan. A board as you can get with two citizen members from each of the main parties, who then appoint their own chair, a fifth member. The election board also designed to be citizen-led. Kudos to the framers for stipulating that no member of the board shall be or have been an elected county official. This was certainly done for good reason. During this past year, our nation experienced a global pandemic and one of the most contentious elections in history. In Pennsylvania, we had our first primary and general election since state legislatures enacted law to allow no excuse mail-in ballots. Our Board of Elections and Bureau of Elections had their work cut out for them. With the pandemic, the contentious election, and the new mail-in ballot initiative, they worked hard to make our primary and general elections as safe, transparent, and accurate as possible. After the general election, there have been many unsubstantiated and unproven claims of the election fraud that have been disputed by the courts. I would like to thank the board and the Bureau of Elections for a job well done under very difficult circumstances. This amendment to the Home Rule Charter is wrong and has all the appearances of: One, laying blame on the election board for the election that didn't go the way some people wanted it to go, when in fact, the board worked and the results were square. The election, the partisan motivation. There is definitely a good chance that the three council members voted to the board could all be of one political party, creating a very nonpartisan board. I would also like to say that I'm very disturbed to hear Councilman Griffiths berating the board of election members during the last meeting on January 20th and telling them that they should all resign. This intimidation concerns me in light of Mr. Griffiths' proposed charter amendment of adding council members to the board. Mr. Griffith wrote in a recent email to me, "The ordinance for the Board of Elections is designed to allow the legislative branch and elected officials that have been exposed to the election laws and process, be able to assist the citizens that are on the Board of Elections with their task of executing PA state election laws." I would think the citizens of the election board would have more knowledge of the election process than most of the council members since their sole function and primary purpose. I'm equally disturbed by the resignation of Luzern County Elections Director and Deputy Elections Director. That said, it is obvious there is a need for change, but it's not to make up the election board. Councilman Griffiths also said, "Let the people decide," in regards to putting this referendum on the ballot. The people decided when they elected all of you that would make a good and prudent decisions that are free of political motivation. On behalf of all the citizens of Luzern County, that is what we're elected to do. I ask council members to do the right thing, both to reject this amendment. That's Denise Williams from County. Those are the emails that I received here, and they are posted on the webpage. Any other members of the public?
Brian Scheiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Scheiner.
If you live in Luzern County and pay attention to the elections and what's been going on since Home Rule started, there has been a conflict between state election law and our charter since day one. Something needs to be done, changes need to be made. This ordinance as introduced may not be the best way to go about this, which is why you all need to review this and discuss this this evening. But try something. Put it on the ballot, let the people decide whether they want to change the charter or not, and see how it goes if they decide yes. If that, if that change doesn't work, you can always put it on the ballot again, change it to something else. But the way it stands, it is not working properly. The members of the election board are trying their best to do their job, but they are in conflict with the state law. And they don't know what to do. They're not sure how to go about things. And it needs to be finalized. So I say, try something. Put it on the ballot, let the people decide if they want to try and change this or not. You can always go back and add it again another year and other changes, but at least try something. Our election board and the election bureau and elections in general in this county are just not working properly according to what the state wants and what the Home Rule Charter says. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, please? Mary Nanda, we have a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
So moved, Sheila.
Sheila, and who was the other person, please?
Steve Irvin.
Mr. Irvin, all in favor, adjourned, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions unheard, motion carries. We're moving now to the second public hearing. We've already done the pledge and a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffiths?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Ms. Sadek?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Thank you.
All present.
Okay. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement for majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting.
So moved, Linda.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Kendra.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, unheard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sadek, do we have a second for Ms. Sadek?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Okay. Mr. Griffiths, any abstentions? Motion carries. The second public hearing is dealing with a request to put a question on the May 18, 2021 primary ballot to amend Article 6, Sections 6.04A of the Luzern County Home Rule Charter. And essentially, what this would allow would be for the county council to have a separate distinct solicitor that would serve the council instead of the current format where the office of law serves the county council for legal matters. We are now open for members of the public, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to this separate legal representation for county council, the last time this was introduced early last year, the executive director of the Pennsylvania Economy League said to county council that the reason they put, you know, the Home Rule Study Commission put the separate solicitors into one office of law was because of contention between the row offices. Now, here, and I could appreciate that. However, I would draw the comparison as if, when the Home Rule Study Commission erred in not looking at it from a broader perspective in terms of the legislative and executive branches, because they're, since they are separate and co-equal branches of government, you would believe that there might be some ethical conflict between legal representation of the two branches of government. And after all, you have the federal government between US Congress, they have their own legal staff, and the president has his own bevy of attorneys. You have the governor of our state who has legal, separate legal representation as opposed to, and you have the General Assembly that has their own legal staff. I mean, I understand how the Home Rule Study Commission members composed this version of Home Rule for Luzern County as a parliamentary form of, parliamentary system of government akin to the European system. And even in the European system of government, if you look at England, or England and Germany, you would see, and even Italy, you would see that the parliament also, those respective parliaments also have their separate legal representations as opposed to their prime ministers and their minister, their separate offices, their agencies, national agencies. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, it does allow, I believe, for, and also, the executive director told Hazelton City Council, which is an optional plan municipality, they told this Hazelton City Council they could retain their own legal counsel under their city administrative code, which they had done in, under their budget process through, if, under special litigation, if there is a conflict that arises. So my, my, my recommendation would be to allow this to be put on the ballot under the, you know, because if there is ever a contention between the executive and legislative branches in the future, you would have that problem of a conflict. So I believe that this should be allowed to be put to the voters on the ballot for them to decide. If they voted down, then it is the people's will. If not, then that would, thank you.
Other members of the public, please?
Mr. Mantra.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mantra.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have to agree with Mr. Raybo, Chairman McGinley. The conflict that I've already heard in, in, in the meetings that I've been going to, there's, there's been a conflict between members of council and the legal staff, which is good. Conflict opinions are good, but they have no recourse if the, the people contact the county council members and say they want something changed, and the office of law doesn't feel that they should entertain the idea. I believe that the county council should have their own separate attorney because of that fact. So if, if you have, like, the election bureau, they have their own attorney. The, all the ABC boards in the county have their own attorneys. So why can't the county council have their own attorney? And I'll sit back and listen to the answer. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public, please?
Ron Knapp.
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Chairman McGinley, for allowing me to address this topic. I'm gonna, I'm gonna place these in a question form in respect to the common man in respect to if there's a divorce happening between a marriage. Going into a divorce proceeding, there would be a definite cause for, or a lack of knowledge on the basis of that each party should be represented by an attorney or solicitor. So the best outcome is in, in unison, and nobody's taking advantage of it. And so, with the, when it comes to this being placed on the ballot, let the common man, the voter, decide then. Because it's those people who will go through true life experiences to know the answer to it. It is a common sense rule of thumb, in my opinion, without a doubt, that Luzern County Council absolutely needs a solicitor. And an example is, when the, the situation arose with Amy Comey Barrett, and Luzern County Council not even being made aware that there was an action directed at her to be removed from what she was going to do as far as the Supreme Court ruling. And I, I just feel, I feel that with that, that very, very important matter that we saw come and go, and that Luzern County Council wasn't even made aware of it until it was in the press, it seems to me that's, that's proof of it in every aspect that the solicitor is an absolute necessity. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Yeah, me, John Dzinski.
Would you repeat the name again, please?
John Dzinski.
Go ahead, Mr. Dzinski.
I'd like Luzern County Children Youth Investigated.
You like what?
Luzern County Children Youth Investigated.
Okay. That, that's not dealing with this particular public hearing.
I don't know what's dealing with particular, but I could deal with that, though.
Okay.
Why they're only targeting certain, certain income brackets. They targeted people of my mail, my kids.
Okay, but this is a public hearing about the question to be placed on the ballot.
Okay, who do I bring this up to then?
Excuse me, Mr. Dzinski, I'm having trouble understanding what you're saying. You muted your mic too there.
Okay, who do I bring this up, who do I bring this up to?
You can speak at the end of the voting session on any subject, Mr. Dzinski.
All right, then.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just have that one email that, from Claudia Glennon. We also voice a no to the proposed additional expense of hiring a separate county board solicitor. Any other members of the public? If not, that's entertaining motion for adjournment.
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Raedel, do we have a second for Ms. Raedel?
Second, Irvin.
Mr. Irvin, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions unheard, motion carries. The public hearings are now complete. Okay, it's now 6:01, we're going to call the meeting to order. I will begin with a pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I'd ask everybody to stand where they're located and pledge to the flag with us. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America. And to the republic, to understand, one nation under God. Indivisible, just.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffiths? Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you.
All present.
We have recognitions and retirements, several retirements to this one. Christine Weldon, from Manager Tech, from the Mental Health Developmental Services. Cheryl Yardcheck, Administrative Assistant I, from the Department of Aging. William Look Youngblood, who is an IT specialist with the Department of Aging. Kathy Zakar, a caseworker II, with Mental Health Developmental Services. And Cynthia Howe, Aging Care Manager Supervisor. I wish them well in their retirement and good health as they move forward with their new careers or new agendas. Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffiths.
Like item number two and item number four, we moved off the agenda and placed on the work session. They were not discussed in the work session prior to being put on the voting session.
I agree with the fact that number two.
And number four.
Was discussed.
No, we just discussed the letter. We didn't discuss the agreement or anything.
Yeah, but that was, that, we knew what the discussion was, Mr. Griffiths, so I disagree with that. Now, number two, there's a deadline, excuse me, one second, and I'll certainly allow you to reply. We have a deadline for number two by the end of January, which is, you know, Friday for us. And that's why that, that's on the agenda to be voted on this evening.
Wasn't that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead, no.
Number two, didn't we get that information in December?
I don't remember getting it. The email indicated that, Mr. Griffiths, but I, I don't remember getting it personally.
Okay.
Okay. Number four, like I said, I felt we've discussed it, but, and there again, we have a, a deadline that has to be complied with prior to the beginning of petitions for the elected office of tax court. Anyone else?
But if I could, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. Who's that?
Yeah, Harry Haas here. I don't know which, what, what number it is offhand, but whatever the, the tax collector increase is, I don't know if that's number two or number four.
That's number four, Ms. Haas.
That's number four. And I would say, I did not get the request, I know it was today, but for the, I would like to move to postpone that for the next voting session because we didn't get to see the chain email discussion.
Okay, you can move to postpone it when we get to that. That would certainly be appropriate at that time. Anyone else? If not, then we have a motion to approve the voting session agenda.
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Sadek, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
Nay.
And Walter?
And Walter votes no as well.
Okay, we have two no votes. Thank you. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement of majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Irvin.
Chris.
Mr. Irvin, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions unheard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Leanne.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving over to public comment on agenda items, please. Now open for members of the public to comment on agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to agenda item number three, I have a question with respect to Hazelton Transit. If that were, if Hazelton Transit were to be included, would that require them to be part of a consolidation, you know, if a potential consolidation were to be proposed? That would be my question on agenda item number three. And on agenda item number five, with regards to the LERTA, I implore and urge the council members to remove the one section of the LERTA, I'm for the LERTA in, with, on the condition of, and respect to, the removal of the sale of the property, if the LERTA, if the sale of the property goes through, the LERTA transfers to a new developer. That needs to be removed immediately because that gives, that cedes the power and authority of council to the developer, and the developer could just give to another developer without any assurance from the new, from any potential new developer that they would seed the project through to fruition. That's my concern on agenda item number five. Agenda item number six, I'm not going to belabor in terms of what I already said during the public hearing. I would only point to what was said, you know, in the DCED guidebook on home rule, on home rule counties, I believe it's on page 52 or 53. I would urge the council member, I know the Election Inquiry Committee had that guidebook given to them, I sent it to them. I would strongly urge that they say that to the rest of council. And as far as the, you know, the separate solicitor for the, for the county council, I would say that the budget, the budget, when it comes to this year's budget and future budgets, they could allocate separately for the, the legal counsel, for the county, or for the legal representation for county council, and it wouldn't incur more expense. They could draw it out of the office of law's budget and to pay for the county council's legal representation. So that is actually a flimsy excuse by certain individuals that say that it would incur an additional expense when you have budget times that you have the manager.
Lay down.
Increasing, increasing the budget line items and spending more than what they were allocated in previous years. I'm not saying last year, but in previous years, the county manager, not this, not only this one, but the previous one spent more and did not tell county council. So those are my only items, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public, please?
Ronald Knapp?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Chairman McGinley and council. This is in regards to agenda number five, LERTA. First and foremost, can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes, sir. I'm coming through loud and clear.
I am not against business, and my viewpoint of the subject are for a level playing field for the common man. Subsidization could be across the board. If we are going to subsidize the business of this nature, then we're not doing the same for all businesses. If we are going to give LERTA to a business because he's going to impact 500 million in a piece of land, that is fine and great, although the same could be followed through with smaller businesses who are investing his or her own resources for job creation. Also, it is important to note that each large business knows where they can find a workforce of great work ethic. It is right here in northeast PA. It's here because they know the dynamic potential in the workforce and often pay less than most regions in PA or the nation for that matter. in most regions in PA or the nation for that matter. Just check on their stock price. Some of these companies who have invested and do business here, they do well because of the gold mine workers. That's not what I have for agenda five. And I'm gonna let it rest for now.
Other members of the public, please?
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I'd, I'd like to voice my opinion on the two items that I already spoke about, the election bureau. I think it should be up to the people to vote on that, uh, item. And because of the fact that the people are the ones that are voting for you council people, so I think the people should vote on whatever they need to vote on so that it would be fair and equitable. And as far as the, that item that, that Walter wanted to remove about the taxpayer, I don't think that it's fair in any way to give the taxpayers a raise and they didn't give anybody else in the county a raise. I think that that's absurd because of the fact that they do make their money sitting at home and people bring the money to them. So if we would eliminate the tax collectors and just have the money sent to the county, we wouldn't have to worry about giving them a raise, would we? And, and the other agenda item that, that sort of bothers me was the, the, uh, they're calling it LERTA or LERTA or whatever that is. That's the ten-year, the ten-year policy for giving people an incentive to, uh, uh, bring their businesses in here. Correct. But I don't think it should be a ten-year. I think they should cut it down considerably because look, look at all the improvements that we made into Hanover Township. All those buildings that are put there, all right, they're all tax-free. The county's not getting anything out of it. All the new buildings that they put there, like Chewy and, and all the buildings that, uh, uh, the new businesses that came there, the county's not getting a dime. And if they could pass that on to the next people that, that buy the business or that own the business, I don't think that's fair. I mean, the, the, the general public of somebody trying to open a small business mom and pop place, they should have the same uh, option as the people that have, uh, the big businesses. So, I mean, there's some of the items that, uh, that I, that I would like to bring up. And the solicitor item is number one on my list. I think the county council should have a separate solicitor. When, when they were doing the budget, I listened to every, every item. And every item that was put in there was supposed to be brought down, but guess what? It wasn't. So the money is there. It are tax dollars that are paying these, these fees. So it should be our tax people that should vote for whether we want a solicitor there or not. And, and, I mean, I, I feel strongly about that because there's a lot of conflicts, like Mr. Knapp brought up, in a marriage. So if you go to a marriage, uh, divorce lawyer, the divorce lawyer says, well, let's just have one divorce lawyer and we'll save money. But you can't because there's two opposing parties that are not going to be represented fairly in, in the matter. So, I mean, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public, please?
Uh, yes, this is Denise Williams.
Okay, Ms. Williams, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman of the Board and the Council and all council members. Uh, what I want to say is I want to respond to several of the, um, citizens who have called in to say, um, let the people decide by putting it on the ballot. Um, this should never even be on the ballot at all. And the reason I want to say that is because this amendment is totally based on self-interest and partisan motivation of a few council members who hope to boondoggle the public. And so I, I ask all council members to vote no for this, um, sham. And also, as in regards to the solicitor, um, I, I don't know, I don't understand, one, after all this time that it's, you know, been working since, what, two thousand twelve, that all of a sudden there's a need for a separate solicitor. Um, there's also a concern when you have separate solicitors about creating the opportunity to have intra-county litigation, and I think that's a real concern. I personally, as a citizen, don't want to pay for another solicitor if you guys can't figure it out, uh, yourselves. And, um, I think having one solicitor for all of you is really a good thing because then you do have to work it out. And, and they have to determine the law, and the law is the law. And, uh, that's their job, uh, not to be, uh, particular to one, either the executive or the legislative branch. Uh, so I think there's more to this than meets the eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public, please?
Brian Shiner.
Mr. Chairman, I have something on behalf of the members. Wait, uh, Mr. Haas, I think Mr. Shiner got in ahead of you there a little bit. Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
Evening. On, in reference to the, uh, Joint Committee for Luzern and Lackawanna Counties with Transportation, I think it's probably a very good idea to sit down and discuss what can be done, but I don't like the fact that Hazleton Transit is going to be invited to participate. I think they should be part of it and part of any consolidation that takes place. They are a transit system within our county, and if there's going to be consideration of, of consolidation, it should be between all entities. The LERTA that's being considered. I agree with Mr. Raybo. The idea to be able to pass this on to a new owner has to be removed. We had a problem with Trammell Crow years ago, and they sold the property after getting their tax diversion. And that tax diversion went with it. And there was a lot of discussion back then. So learn from your own history and don't make the same mistake again. In reference to the items to be put on the ballot, charter was not chiseled in stone. Charter was unable to be changed for the first five years for a reason. Let it work to see what did work, what didn't work, and then after that time, be able to make changes. Changes need to be made. If you look at the, the Office of Law and the fact that they represent the legislative and executive branch, go to Lone State in Harrisburg, the Senate has their own council and the House has their own council, and they're both legislative. Also, the governor has his or her own council. There's reasons for that. And it needs to happen here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This again is a comment from Moderno Rossi, AKA Butch. Um, so it's not Carlo, Ms. Lawrence, that's a, that's a red wine. Shame on me. And, and forgive me too, Butch. Um, he says, I'm reverting agenda item number four without the tax collectors. He says, I think tax collectors are doing a good job. They're also like family to the people in their area. I feel the treasurer's office would not be able to do the job with the four employees you have now. You would have to, you would have to hire two more. And I'd like my comment released to the board. That's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other members of the public? If not, we also had an email from, um, Donna Hayes. I'm gonna go to him now. I write to as a taxpayer and a former employee of the treasurer's office. My name is Donna Hayes.
Excuse me, Mr. McGinley? Mr. McGinley? Mr. McGinley, I'm hearing some really strong typing. Could someone stop typing that is typing?
Yeah, but please, if you're gonna type, uh, would you mute your microphone so that we would not be, uh, infringed there with that, uh, noise? Thank you.
Hello, Tim. That was, uh, that's Sharon's phone number causing that, just so you know.
Okay. And then, um, Ms. Lawrence, you'll have to, if you're typing, please mute your phone.
I did. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I'm going to continue with this email, all right? "I wish the county would seriously consider the option of in-house tax collection. The days of farming and one-car families are pretty much gone. We now have homes where both parents work and/or many single-parent homes. They can't work the schedule around the tax collector's limited hours. When they need to document or need to pay, they have to do it on their schedule, not a part-time one. The treasurer's office is open to the public Monday through Friday from nine to four-thirty. Although I'm not in favor of dealing with cash, many folks do, and there are quite a few tax collectors that no longer accept cash, the treasurer's office does. The treasurer's office is also able to process data files from mortgage and escrow companies. Tax collectors do not have the ability. They charge the mortgage companies duplicate bill fees. The fees get passed on to the property owner. The number-one complaint of people using tax collectors, they can never reach them, and it's worse when discount ends." There's, so they would come to our office and our hands were tied. We cannot take their payment. We cannot give them receipts. If we do, we have to write it on, write on it, and that's not a official document because we are not the tax collector. That does not, that does not help those who are looking to buy, refinance, or send in for tax rebate. Number-two complaint, they want to pay online. Many today don't have checks. That may sound odd to those of us over forty, but they use their bank card. Others want to use a credit card for various reasons. You can't do that with a tax collector. I'm sure that when the county began the online payment option, but I started working at an office at the beginning of two thousand seventeen, and every year till September of two thousand twenty, when I left, online payments increased. When more learned of it, they used it. Online is available twenty-four seven. The treasurer's office also has a concise webpage. How many tax collectors have a webpage? Offhand, I can't think of any. People moving into Pennsylvania do not understand our system. Many wind up and tax claim the first year of homeownership because the tax bill was issued in the seller's name. The treasurer's office sends reminder notices using the current owner's information. School districts and municipalities can still use the tax collectors. Counties should collect for the county, period. Sincerely, Donna Hayes." Thank you. Okay, I think we're, have the public comment on agenda items. Moving down to the first motion to approve the minutes in the January twelfth meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Chris.
Who was that, please? One repeated.
Perry.
Perry, Mr. Haas, thank you. Second for Mr. Haas.
Second.
Sheila.
Mr. Schnee, thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 You need an opposition?
No.
Walter.
Every.
Mr. Urban and Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We don't have any items.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Perry gets the distinction of making the motion.
Excuse me?
That was Chris, not me making that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Mr. Perry made the motion and Ms., Mr. Schnee made the second. Thank you. Nothing under old business, under agenda items, county manager. Motion to introduce the ordinance, submitting the Luzern County zoning map to rezone one parcel property, totally one point five four acres in Ross Township, from B one, Neighborhood Business District Zone to A one Agricultural District Zone. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second? On the question. Trace a motion to introduce the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley? Or, excuse me, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to item number two, motion approving agreement to participate in the unemployment compensation program of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Trust. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, on the question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, could you, um, have some, could someone please explain what this is about? I have no idea what this is for or why. Is there a cost to the county for this or what is this, what, what is this function?
Okay, uh. Mr. Pedri or Mr. Parsnick, you want to address this?
This is Dave Pedri. I have to defer to Mr. Parsnick or Ramelda on that one.
Okay. Mr. Parsnick or Mr. Crocomal? Mr. Parsnick or Mr. Cro, Ms. Crocomal?
It's fine, I could take it.
Uh, Brian, okay, Mr. Swets, go ahead.
So, uh, to Mr. Griffith's question, currently we are a member of this trust. My understanding is it's just giving the trust a different name and the, the ability to have a reserve fund. Uh, this email did not come to me. I just know through the budget process that we get the rates from C cap and we've used them before. My understanding is with everything going on with the current pandemic, that this gives, uh, the trust the ability to have a restricted fund, uh, kind of like a fund balance. In the past, probably two or three years ago, the county got maybe two hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't an every-year thing. The county, based on their claims, uh, can get money back. And the way I read this was that that was gonna go away and they were gonna keep at least something, uh, in this trust for all the counties so that if there was anything, uh, major, that they'd have something instead of just passing the fees on to everyone in the trust. Again, I worked on it for budget, but I didn't get the email, but that's what I can fill you in on.
Am I correct in, Mr. Swets, that this is a normal cost? This is not something new to the county as far as, uh, budgetary expense?
In the past, it's included in our regular C cap membership. This is not an add-on cost. Uh, when we pay our, our membership to C cap, we never paid. It was one of the things that is part of our C cap membership. So we're already budgeted for a C cap membership, and we've used them in the past. That's the only thing that I know that changed, but like I said, it was not addressed to me, but I did want to give council the information that I had.
Okay. So, Mr. Griffith, I think the short answer there is there's no additional cost to the county. This is something that we've been, uh, participating in long before home rule, uh, became part of the county government. And as, uh, Mr. Swets indicated, I know there were several years where we got a rebate of about two hundred or two hundred twenty thousand dollars based on their administration of those claims. So it was, uh, uh, an extra bonus that we received coming back through this organization.
So does our, does our, uh, unemployment compensation go through C cap then? Is that how, is that what, that's what this trust fund is for, is it?
I think that's what Mr. Swets only thinks.
Mr. Swets, is that what that does? Is, is we send our unemployment compensation claims through?
I believe so. Uh, Mr. Parsnick handles admin services. Again, I just know as part of the budget, so I know we pay C cap and we get a refund for them. The day-to-day process of how we process the claims, I can't answer.
Um, so who's our, uh, is if we get one trustee from a class three county, do we know who that is, the election trustee?
I do not.
Okay. Do we know, do we really know anything about this at all? I mean, it, it sounds like we really don't.
Like I said, the thing that I know is that in the past, it was no, uh, there was no restricted fund, no restricted fund balance. So if they collected, uh, just use a number, ten million in claims and they only had six million, they would prorate up, give the four million back to the other counties and participants. Uh, this to me seems like they want to keep some of that money in-house that if they, to pay something out or to stop an exorbitant fee increase. But that's
And I, and I understand C cap is a good organization, and I'm not, I'm not questioning C cap's operation here. I just want to know what the benefit is for the county. If they administer unemployment compensations for us, or do we go through the regular channel when somebody goes on unemployment and they file a claim at the unemployment office and it gets opened a claim? And does those claims go to this, this company as a C cap or does it come to the county? Does Michelle Sparage handle unemployment for us? Or, I, I mean, I'm just confused as to why we're gonna enter into this. I mean, I'm just confused as to why we're going to enter into this agreement if we, if they do nothing for us, other than we sit back with a wish list, hope that they'll send us money.
Mr. McGinley?
Who's speaking?
Sheila.
Ms. Sabin, go ahead.
When I was reading it, it seemed an awful like, awful lot, like a consortium for unemployment compensation, that our rates probably are much better as sixty-seven counties than as one. And so it reduces our rate, I would believe, Walter, that it's probably administered through them, so we save on administrative costs, too. I don't know anything about the issue of the restrictive versus getting the sum back, but it seems to me that it would be easy to call C cap and find out that person and have them at our next meeting.
Well, that's kind of why I wanted to put it on the work sessions, because we haven't had that dialogue. And, and my concern, my concern is, and I appreciate the input, Ms. Sabin, because, I mean, it does sound a little bit like that, but, I mean, somebody on the, I, I'm sure people have applied for unemployment in the county, and I'm sure that some, Angela Gavlick or somebody would be able to enlighten us as council members of what's the point of this agreement, but apparently we don't have that information.
Mr. McGinley, I apologize. Mr. McGinley, could I have your?
Yeah. Mr. Pedri?
Thank you. Dave Parsnick, Dave Parsnick is, will, will be long, eyeing on to the computer, about fifteen minutes, he had another event. He'll be happy to answer any questions. Can we just hold off on, on this, maybe come back to it later on in the voting session? Move to the next one?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. We can come back. Go to number three, and, and when and if Mr. Parsnick, if on with us, we can go back and have some questions from Mr. Parsnick. Okay. We still have the motion and a second on the floor, and then once we get Mr. Parsnick on the line, we can review the questions and see the answers, and then we can make a decision. So we'll go to number three, motion to appoint council members to a joint committee between Luzern and Lackawanna Counties with regards to consolidation of LCTA and Colts. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Sheila.
Ms. Sabin, do we have a second for Ms. Sabin?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Houck, very good. On the question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
One of the things that's troubling about this whole issue with this committee is, as, as mentioned in public comment, is Hazleton Transit is not in this. And as everybody on council knows, this has been a bugaboo in council since two thousand and twelve, Commissioner Irvin raised it, and further on, as we got into home role, as a councilman, he raised the issue about Hazleton Transit, and, you know, they're serving outlying counties, and they're not giving any money, and the county subsidizes Hazleton Transit. And so now we get an agreement or a letter from LCTA, which is asking us to authorize a committee to sit down and figure out if this merger is going to be a good idea between LCTA and Colts, but there's nothing in the letter that says anything at all about Hazleton Transit, even being in the committee, let alone to have a discussion to put them into the consolidation. When I stopped over at the courthouse over the weekend, reading presented by LCTA, I read the summary from PennDOT, which was drafted in two thousand and eleven, and that summary clearly states that Hazleton Transit, LCTA, Shared Ride, Colts, and Colts Shared Ride and Luzern County, Wyoming County Transportation was supposed to be included as part of this consolidation plan. Now, all of a sudden, we're asking to get on a committee to just LCTA together so they can save money. And I said, okay, so let me see your audit report. So I look at their audit report, and in their audit report, they're paying life insurance to board members. Well, that's not saving any money, number one. Number two is, I don't think it's something that our charter allows, but they've been doing that for years. Not only are they paying life insurance for county, county board members to sit on that board, but they're also paying it for employees who no longer work for the company. So the company retires from the LCTA, they pay life insurance until they die. Board members get life insurance until they die. That is not being cost-effective, and, and to join two entities together because they want to save money, I think is, is somewhat of a misnomer, and I don't have a problem with the committee, but the problem I have with the committee is I think the committee should be consolidated with all entities of public transportation, not just the ones that they think are appropriate, that they could just get together and say, yeah, okay, we're good, we're good with the Colts, and we're good with LCTA. I just think it's, it should be all transportation as outlined in the PennDOT study in eleven. And, and if we are in fact worried about saving money with LCTA, we need to get their financial house in order and stop paying for things that they're not supposed to be paying for. Life insurance benefit for board members is obscene. They're volunteers. They apply for the board of LCTA, and they get put on the board, and then they get life insurance, and nobody from that board decided that that was something they should tell council about. Yet, the ABC committee, one of the questions we ask, and I'm on all of the calls with Mr. Perry and the team, is one of the questions is if you found something that was not appropriate, would you tell county council? And we haven't heard a word from anybody on the LCTA board. I just think that this is a real problem for the LCTA. If they're going to save money, let's save money and be realistic about it and cut our expenses and house first, get our financial house in order there, and then if we want to consolidate and we're genuine about it, then we can move forward with it.
Well, other members of the council, please.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
Yeah, I don't see how any of us council members can support this. I mean, number one, Walter, thanks for the research. I mean, now I know why that's such a popular board to, to join on. You know, we have some boards that some people really want to participate in. Well, that makes sense to me now, so thank you for uncovering that. Secondly, this leaves Hazleton out in the cold, and I'm, I'm so sick of Hazleton being left out of things like this, and I, I think it just, it doesn't move us in the right direction. There seems like there's always something deeper. We're trying to ask the right questions, but if we go back to the presentation that the, that the consultant made, even with the, with the merger, the example you used down there in Redding or Berks County, somewhere down there, it was just administrative. There, there, there was not a consolidation of the workforce, and we know that's where a lot of the savings is. So I think for those three reasons, I don't see how anybody can possibly support this. Thank you.
Other members of the council?
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
It's Sheila. Walter, Mr. Griffith, did you find out what the, I mean, I know life ins, look, they shouldn't have been paid, it's part of the charter, but I do know life insurance is truly de minimis cost. I just wondered if you came across any total amount that they're paying in life insurance? Maybe that, they have to return that money to us or something like that, but did you find out anything accumulative cost?
Uh, yeah, I think the, the total came out, and, and you're right, it's not a significant amount of money. I mean, you're talking about, it looks like about four thousand dollars, I think, from the last email, and I will forward the emails to all of council. I apologize for not getting that out to everybody. I got some of that information today.
That's four thousand dollars a year, though.
Yeah, it's four thousand dollars a year, and, and we have, and we have fifteen year, we have fifteen members. The, the problem is, is we're paying it when they're retired, and we, you don't retire from the board, and, and so, and I understand, you know, when we're looking at about dollars and cents, four thousand dollars to some people probably isn't a lot, but for the reasons that I say is, it's just something that shouldn't be done, and I understand they're probably going to correct it now that it's been identified, but the problem that I have is, where has everybody on the board been that they didn't see it in their audit? It's been in their audit for years. Since two thousand and five, it's been in their audit, and nobody, and the county council and of, well, it would be commissioners, who according to the Authorities Act, should have approved that if in fact they were giving that to their employees, because a board, a compensation to a board is something that has to be approved by the governing body, according to the Authorities Act of Title fifty-three. So if they're doing it since two thousand and five, I don't believe the commissioners approved it. I didn't do the research on that, but, I mean, clearly, it's not something that should be done. As far as the commission goes, I mean, that's the topic we're talking about. I think that if we want to form the commission and we want to get people on there, I think whoever gets on the committee needs to be really paying attention to make sure we do include Hazleton, because I think we can get a lot of help for Hazleton Transit if we consolidate them into one big authority, if that's where the, the, the study goes to. But, you know, when I uncovered this, this thing about them being, being paid for life insurance for life as board members, I went, wow. And, and non-union employees get paid life insurance for life, and so do union members for life? That's a, I mean, it's, it's de minimis, it's maybe five hundred dollars or five dollars a month, but it shouldn't happen. Yeah, sure. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I'm sure LCTA is going to fix it, but we've been watching this story there. Where's their solicitor? Where's their, why isn't the auditor calling out saying, do you have permission for this? I don't, I just don't understand. I can allow that for the past fifteen, twenty years, you know?
Mr. Griffith, who does the audits? Is it an independent auditor or county audit?
Uh, it's the, Mr. Alencini from.
Anyone else in council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Am I understanding that we're going to ask Hazleton to be part of this? Is there any reason why they would not want to?
Mr. Perry, I was going to comment after, you know, everybody else had a chance, but since you bring it up, we have a situation here where we have a letter for LCTA talking about potential consolidation with Lackawanna County Colts. The, both of those groups are authorities, our group in Lackawanna County. As we all know, Hazleton Transit is a department of Hazleton City. This is a separate and distinct level of government. So as a result, my thought would be, if we vote to have a committee to, to study this potential consolidation, then we would invite the Hazleton Transit Group through the mayor, I guess, of Hazleton, since he's the head of the government for the city of Hazleton, to participate in that committee. Now, since it is a state, a city department, it's a little bit different than what, you know, the authorities would be, but my personal opinion is I see no disadvantage for them to participate, but I think we would have to invite them through the mayor's office because he's the head of the government for the city of Hazleton. And I think that would be a proper step for that committee to invite that group to participate. We don't know what the study will show. When the study comes back to council, you know, decisions will be made based on the information that will be provided from that committee. Then there'll be decisions made, not until that study and the meetings are held and the discussions are held. So I think at this point, all we're looking for is to approve, to have a joint committee to work with the two authorities, and I believe that committee should invite the Hazleton City Department of Transit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Houck, go ahead.
Right. So my question on this is, is this part of, or a follow-up on the PennDOT initiative from several years back?
I think that's where it's initiated, Ms. Houck.
It wa, it didn't start at PennDOT, though. It's starting at this level, and it would move toward PennDOT. Is that what you're saying?
I, I think PennDOT will participate, and probably, I assume they would support that, but I can't speak for PennDOT, but, you know, you, you have that report that was initiated back in two thousand and twelve, I think.
Right.
You know, they backed off of that, as you remember, from that report, and allowed things to continue as they were, but I think there's another initiative at this point to try to promote more consolidation, so there'll be better efficiency. There's been one other area of the state where two transportation authorities have consolidated now, and I think that seems to be the strong trend to consolidate.
That's my question. Is this, is this coming from PennDOT?
Well, the letter came from LCTA board.
Okay, but, I, I mean, I'm looking for like where it generated, so is it?
I think, you know, obviously, PennDOT has a vested interest, I believe, but.
Okay, and then you'll also, you'll also remember that back in two thousand and eleven, twenty twelve, well, it was really two thousand and eleven, there was a plan for Hazleton to simulate with LCTA, and to the point that we even, the commissioners had appointed board members to the LCTA board. They never actually took the seats, but we did have a little bit of confusion at the beginning of two thousand and twelve because of that, and that plan fell through, and I think some of that had to do with the management and the question of how the management would occur, because Hazleton kind of felt they were managing it just fine on their own, and LCTA had some issues. So, I, I mean, I think that this, that's where this needs to go. If we're going to have a regional transportation authority, or, you know, any kind of consolidation, it has to be completely regional, not, you know, two entities and, and leaving somebody out, so. I mean, I seconded this, but my goal with this would be to include Hazleton as, as a part of this consolidation effort.
I think that's a good goal. Personally, I would like to see that consolidation myself. Anyone else?
But I, I would say, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Haas.
When the LCTA president and the consultant were here, this is what we suggested as council members, and we suggested this, and here we are, all these weeks later, and no results. I mean, I, I have an extremely hard time signing onto something with, with this kind of track record, that's all. I mean, are we going to be regional, or are we going to be exclusive? And that's what this, this looks like to me.
Anyone else?
Well, I do have one more comment, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
If I can, and it, it's, it deals with this business of the life insurance for life, and, you know, de minimis, I, I don't think we want to go down that slope, because it's a slippery slope, and, you know, the, the question is whether there is an ethical issue, and I think de minimis or not, the concept of it is wrong. And so I, I really think that the LCTA should be explaining to the council exactly what they're doing, but the board members, the charter is clear that they're not to receive compensation. The only board that receives any compensation is, but my question this afternoon, I, I did see the, one of the emails, and I replied to the gentleman from LCTA, and I, you know, told him, as long as he's talking to the solicitor, he should ask the solicitor if they ever reviewed those bylaws and their policies to be in conformity with the charter, because you'll remember that in two thousand and twelve, council did say that we wanted every one of those authorities, boards, and commissions to review their bylaws and their operations to make sure they were in conformity with the charter, and somebody should have been looking over all that stuff to make sure that there was nothing that equated to compensation going to anyone on the board. So that, to me, is a big question. That, that goes back to charter compliance, and it goes back to oversight, and I think that needs to be followed up on.
Mr. McGinley?
You're correct in that, you know, when home rule was initiated, we did a lot of work with the ABCs. That was one of the committees that you headed at that time, and, you know, that was one of the directives that we sent out to all the ABCs to, you know, comply with the charter, make sure your bylaws and whatever else you had in place was in accordance with the charter. So, but we could follow up on that, certainly, but this question is a little bit different at this point. Certainly, that question regards to the term life insurance will be looked at.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Yes.
And I just want to say something to Linda or to the council. I didn't mean for, that we should ignore it as de minimis. I wanted to see how much they have been spending that when they, you know, that would save them money, how much have they spent on this? So it's another issue, because I did see your letters this afternoon, and I, I have read the charter, and that was improper, totally, and I think there's some accountability that is necessary.
Okay.
One quick question here, too. Can we have their legal staff also, or have legal staff just review to that, you know, since they are receiving life insurance, if it's an ethical violation on their State Ethics Act form, just to, just to review it, you know, I mean, if it has to be disclosed as such? Um, just to, just to review it, you know, I mean, if it has to be disclosed as such.
Okay.
Since, you know, if, if it's a ten thousand dollar life insurance policy, you know, uh, would it be considered a gift? Would, how would that be classified from an ethical?
We'll ask for that clarification, how that should be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ross, go ahead.
Quick statement, uh, Linda, well said. And Walter, thank you for finding that information out. I appreciate it.
Sorry, go ahead. All right, anything else?
Mr. Chair, do board members get other perks on the LCTA, like free passes or free lunches or anything like that? I think that would be, I think if we're going to look at this, we should look at all these other things.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Ross, I think if, and you were part of the council, the original council, I think we discussed all that early on. In fact, if you remember correctly, I think they came in and made a presentation to us as a group and gave us a free pass, uh, each member of council. And I think everybody gave the pass back and said, please, uh, you know, put that back in your, your story, Jerry, or whatever. But, you know, we would not set that as a council member, a free pass, whatever. But in light of this, we certainly will review that again. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Hi.
No, until something's straightened out, no.
I had a comment before they took a roll call vote, please.
What was the comment?
It was Walter, I, I had my mic muted. I, I apologize.
Okay, go ahead.
Before we go to the vote, I, I apologize, Sharon. Um, on the, uh, on this committee thing, uh, the exact summary that I, I think Ms. Howe was talking about was that dated February twenty ninth. That's one of the documents that was in council that I looked at. And it's clear in there that they're talking about Hazelton Transit as well. And I think maybe if we could get the committee to have that conversation, that would be helpful. But on the, on the issue of the life insurance, I want to know how many people cashed in that life insurance policy that was on the board that passed away and got a policy payment of forty-five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars? Because that's the question. I mean, we, this thing's been going, and I sent council a copy of the minutes that I just sent it just now, by the way, for all members of council, that, uh, Mr., uh, uh, I'm trying to think of the gentleman's name, Listman, Randy Listman sent us. And it says, it says under old business that they made a motion to amend the original motion for board members to receive life insurance benefits such as active members and as retirees from the board. Mr. Di Roberto's motion is to amend the time of service on the board from the original ten years of service to after five years of service to get the insurance. So how many people that were getting this life insurance since two thousand and five passed away and got a check for ten thousand dollars? That's an interesting question because we have board members and I asked for the names of the people on the board that are getting the life insurance. It'll be really interesting to know how many people were getting it, got paid out because they passed away and had that insurance. So we need to get that information from LCTA. Maybe we could get the Office of Law to send them a, a letter from council asking for that information.
The Office of Law has the information that was provided and I've asked, uh, for a review of that.
All right, very good. All right, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I apologize for jumping in.
Well, well, um, Mr. Ross, you're still a no vote. I mean, you were the first.
Still a no, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Ross is still a no. Go ahead.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine, yes, two, no.
Motion carries. Uh, hopefully our next meeting to leave hence. I'll have some more information about the committee and who will be part of it. And then we'll, we'll get the committee, the committee members together at that point. Now that we know, we would like to proceed with having a committee to discuss that. Moving down to number four, motion to adopt the resolution setting the compensation rates for elected tax collectors and home move municipalities for billing and collecting Luzerne County taxes effective January one, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? On the question.
The chair is superb. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this, um, motion based on the fact that we don't have all the information.
Mr. Ross, make the motion.
Very last minute.
We have a second for Mr. Ross.
I'll second that, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? So we have a motion to postpone. Roll call, please.
Howe? Ms. Howe?
Ms. Howe, are you muted?
Mr. McGinley, on a motion to postpone, do we get to comment on the motion or no? Is that like tabling?
No, it's not like tabling. You could comment if you wish.
Okay, so before.
And not have any discussion, but postpone what we could.
Okay, so is. Yes, I do. Um, and I, I appreciate Mr. Haas's, uh, motion to postpone. I'll give Linda a chance to get squared away on her end for the computer. Obviously she's having difficulty. But my question, my question here for the postponement is the resolution, and this is why I wanted to be put on the work session, is we just received the resolution, I think, yesterday or maybe even today, the finalized res.
Yesterday morning, Mr. Rick.
Okay, well, one of the questions that I have is, and, and I, you know, I was looking through some research on this thing because I was at these meetings when council adopted the ordinance to remove the tax collectors and collect in-house. Now, I don't, and I did send an email to you, Mr. McGinley, asking for the settlement, and there is no settlement. So I don't understand.
Mr. Griffith, uh, I think my, I replied to that email. I just, and then I'll certainly let you finish your comment. I'm sorry if I.
Go ahead if it has.
I mean, like, I had, you know, had sent it forward to, uh, the, you know, I looked myself. I had Ms. Lawrence look, uh, in some of the back files, et cetera. And then I forwarded some stuff to Ms. Crocomel and asked her to follow up with the Office of Law. They did come up with a, uh, settlement agreement and, uh, I don't know. I know Mr. Urban had sent me an email, I think, yesterday, asking about the same ordinance. And I sent him a copy of the agreement after Ms. Crocomel replied. So there is a litigation, uh, settlement.
Did we ever vote on that?
So there is a settlement.
Somebody else was talking there, I.
I'm sorry. There is a settlement? Go ahead, I'll, no.
I'm sorry, there was another voice in there that I. But the settlement agreement, uh, Mr. Griffith, does say the ordinance is null and void.
Well, the concern that I have is I don't have the settlement agreement. I don't have the settlement agreement. I asked for the settlement agreement last Tuesday. And it was, and I appreciate the fact that you tried to get it, but I don't know when you received it. But all members of council apparently don't, don't have it. I don't have it, and I asked for it. So I'm concerned about the fact that, you know, I'm now trying to vote on something thinking that there's an ordinance that says the tax collectors can't be collected in-house. Or they're supposed to be collected in-house when in fact you're telling me there's an agreement that was never voted on because we, I looked through all the minutes from January of two thousand fourteen to the end and there's never been a motion made other than the one that was made in January fourteen of which you abstained because there was no written agreement. And kudos, and kudos to you for doing that because why would you vote on something you haven't seen? So I, I appreciate the fact that you were the only one on council that didn't vote on a settlement agreement of which you didn't see. So the question bears, asking is where is the settlement agreement and what does it say in it? And why didn't council vote on that settlement agreement? Before we go moving ahead on this resolution, we need to get those questions answered. So that's why I'm supporting Harry's motion to postpone this is because we just don't have enough information as council members without that settlement agreement to even know if we have a right to in, increase their compensation at this time. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Anyone else with comments in regards, um, Mr. Haas's motion to postpone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schnee.
Could I have heard from the Office of Law on that?
Sure. Uh, Ms. Crocomel, uh, she had sent me a text earlier. She was having trouble connecting. Ms. Crocomel, okay, go ahead.
Uh, well, specifically the question, I know that we did locate, uh, the settlement agreement. I was under the impression that, uh, that Ramilda had forwarded it to, uh, council. I, I, I didn't forward it myself.
Okay.
I sent it, I'm, I'm back on. I sent it to, uh, Mr. McGinley and I'm sending it right now. And I just want to note, and, and Vito, uh, it, uh, it became part of court order. It wasn't just the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement was included in an order of court signed by a judge.
And, and Mr. McGinley, before we get too far along, why is, why is emails being only sent to Mr. McGinley and not to all of council by anybody?
Excuse me, Mr. Griffith, I think the email that Ms. Crocomel was referring to was in reply to Mr. Urban. Okay?
Well, I, I was the one that asked for the settlement agreement.
I know, and I forwarded that information, uh, Ms.
But my, my question is, why is the Office of Law not including all members of council for items that belong to council? This should never go to one person. It's, we're council. I don't understand why that happens. And this is what happens is now somebody thought that all of council got it, but they didn't. Now we're up for a vote on a resolution and some members of council, I don't know who didn't get it. I'm sure not, other members of council don't have it. And we're going to be required to vote on something without knowing what we're voting on. That's not, that's not fair to us as council members. We should have had that agreement before tonight.
Well, I disagree. You know what you're voting on. You're saying you don't know about the agreement, which is fine.
Right, but the settlement agreement is what nullivates, what null and voids the original ordinance. It doesn't even allow them to collect the tax at all.
Well, they've been collecting the taxes or they've been collecting the taxes right through the whole process. And in two thousand seventeen, we did a resolution for their tax collection also.
Yes, they have, but they've been collecting taxes in my, as we look at things without that settlement agreement, they've been doing that without authority because there was an ordinance that said they weren't supposed to collect the taxes. So if we don't have a settlement agreement that negates that, then they shouldn't have been collecting the taxes at all.
No, actually, I mean.
That's fine. Go ahead, and I'm sorry, I'll, I'll step out. Thank you.
No, the, the, uh, the settlement agreement, uh, has an order attached that's signed by the court. I think initially when, uh, when Ramilda and I and Shannon were asked to look into this, um, and we did the search, I think certain council members may have been under the impression that, you know, we won the lawsuit. Um, and that at some point after that, there was a settlement. Um, and, and that's true, but that doesn't paint the whole picture. Uh, the tax collector representatives had filed an appeal to the Commonwealth Court. So for all intents and purposes, the litigation was still pending. Um, that the settlement was reached, there was a settlement agreement, uh, and the, uh, the court approved the settlement agreement. And I think, I think that settlement agreement was filed, uh, in March of, of fourteen. Uh, there's a reference in the settlement agreement to an approval by council in January of two thousand fourteen of the, uh, of the settlement itself. Uh, I don't, I don't recall that personally. Uh, I don't believe I was there. But, um, there, there is a reference in the settlement agreement to, uh, to the meeting, uh, to a meeting in January where council had approved it. And I'm pulling up the meeting minutes now, uh, to see if I could find it. I, I don't want to hold everyone up here, but, um, the, uh, the accord order was issued, was signed, uh, it, uh, voided the ordinance. Uh, county council, uh, according to the settlement agreement, had a, voted and approved at a public meeting, uh, the settlement, uh, so the ordinance was, uh, was voided. So if that's any, if anyone is having an issue related to that specific fact, whether or not, uh, the ordinance was, was voided or not, it apparently, uh, the court order indicates that it was voided.
Um, Vito, it's, it's Linda. So I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, uh, settlement agreement. And it does say, item number four says, uh, uh, ordinance twenty thirteen dash two is hereby declared null, void and of no further force or effect. So we did not need to do anything as a council to affirm that? Um, and deal with that ordinance?
Uh, if you look, the settlement agreement actually references the act of, of council in approving the, the settlement itself.
Right, but I'm saying regarding ordinance twenty thirteen dash two, we didn't need to do anything about that?
No. By operation, by operational law, the order dismissed it.
Right, that's my question. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, the only question I have for you, though, and it's very short, is that settlement agreement was never voted on at a public meeting. That disperses public funds. It was an agreement that the council should have voted on in public. So the public knew. There is no record of that settlement agreement nowhere in the minutes. There's no record of that settlement agreement anywhere.
I'm actually, I'm looking at, uh, it was on the agenda Tuesday, January twenty-eighth of fourteen. I just pulled it up. I've actually indexed all of the, well, it's a tacky thing, but I indexed all the, the old minutes, um, for the past whatever number of years. I'm not all the way up to date. But luckily I was, uh, this one was one of them that was in that, that index. And, uh, number six on, uh, on the agenda on January twenty-eighth of fourteen was, um, settlement of litigation Luzerne County Tax Collectors Association versus Luzerne County.
But the settlement agreement wasn't there.
It's on the agenda for that day. I mean, I wasn't there that day. I, I would assume if council voted on the settlement that they saw the terms of the settlement.
Well, Mr. Urban's on the, here, he, he would know. He was, he was there. But I'm, I'm just curious, I'm just curious to know why the settlement agreement's not part of the minutes. Or is it?
Uh, I'm looking at, uh, settlement.
I mean, that's my only. I, I know four of us were on council at the time, and I don't ever recall the repealer part of the ordinance being one of the terms. But, I mean, that, that's going back a few years. But, uh, you know, the, the question is, is that if it was repealed by court order, that ordinance should have taken, been taken down off the website so it didn't add the, the additional confusion, um, with the public.
Oh, I, I can't speak to that. But, um, I mean, as far as, uh, I agree one hundred percent. Ramilda and I had, uh, discussions about this last week with Shannon. Uh, we are in agreement that the, uh, that the, uh, the court's approval of the, uh, settlement, uh, app, you know, voided the ordinance. So you're right. I mean, if, whether or not it was still on the website and all that, I, I, I understand. Um, that's more of a ministerial act after the settlement was approved. Um, I don't know what the mechanism would be for that. Who, whose responsibility technically would be to scour over the settlement agreement and then, and then do that. But, but you're right, that could, could cause confusion.
And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to do this and, and say this is just another reason why I think we need our own attorney at times for, for the Office of, of County Council.
I, I don't see how that would have solved this, but.
Well, because, because if, if that's a litigation matter, um, you know, somebody would have been aware of it in, in, in our office to be able to say, hey, to, to whoever the clerk to council is, uh, hey, please have that removed off the website. Because having stuff publicized, you're under the impression that it's codified and it's, it's the law of Luzerne County. We're broadcasting that for seven years or six years at this point. You know, so anybody that goes to our website, you're saying, hey, this is, this is the ordinance, you, you, you know, of Luzerne County. People are reading it, you know, and it's just sloppy, sloppy work again.
Yeah, people are reading it and still paying their taxes to tax collectors instead of paying to the in-house council.
That's, that's the assumption if you live within the county, but to some outsider that might look at our website that outside of this county, it's, they're going to say, hey, this is the law of Luzerne County.
Yeah, I don't see how that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Ross. Chairman, this is, this is, this is a reason why I vote to make a motion to postpone this, this should, this is works and discussion. And this is, this is very speedily and hastily done.
Well, most of us, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Griffith for postponement. Okay? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
No. Motion postponed passes. Remove down to number five. Motion adopt the resolution providing a tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revilization Tax Assistant Act. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question.
Mr. McGinnley?
Mr. Chairman, I've got three amendments.
Okay, hold on one second. Ms. Rado beat you to the punch there in the sauce, but you'll have the next spot. Okay, Ms. Rado, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm looking at page forty one. Let me get there.
Okay.
It's page forty one, three point four. So we're saying that we if you have a sale or exchange of the property, it does not terminate the LURDA. Can we get it? What does the Office of Law say about that if we take that out? Or if we if we made an amendment taking that out?
Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crocamo? And I thought I saw Mr. Rinaldi icon earlier. Yes, okay. Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crocamo?
I'm sorry, Ms. Rado, the specific provision you were looking to take out?
Um, it was page forty one on the agenda. It's three point four. It says that the LURDA does not terminate upon sale or exchange of property.
Okay, you're, I mean, you know, the reality is anything we take out jeopardizes the jeopardizes the project, I would assume. I have had no other than initially when Mr. Rinaldi, Attorney Rinaldi contacted me about the process to follow. I've had no contact with him or the developer or even had any responsibility in the Office of Law for dealing specifically with this. But any terms that are changed, you know, it's supposed to be somewhat of a negotiation. That would be something that would make the LURDA less valuable to the developer. It would increase, presumably would increase the the cost of the project. I couldn't tell you what specifically the numbers would be as far as how it would increase the cost. But my understanding, and Ramilda, I know, is on, she's more familiar with this, but she could correct me if I'm wrong. But the terms of the LURDA would be that any successor or assigned would be responsible for the terms of the LURDA the same as the party that initially signed on to for the LURDA. So violation of the terms by whether it's the original signet, uh, written, original developer or someone who purchases it later would void the terms of the LURDA anyway. So I don't I sort of, I guess I don't I really don't understand so much the the reason why we would look to I guess the reason why we would look to terminate the LURDA and if the property is transferred. Are you aware of any issue with that?
There was, Attorney Rinaldi was on a previous council session and indicated that that was something that his client wouldn't agree to. Obviously, if council wants to make that a term, we can, but I agree with Attorney DeLuca that it may jeopardize the LURDA. So, you know, that's something that council has to consider. So I I know that there were discussions about it and it seemed that Attorney Rinaldi was not going to recommend to his client to waive that right.
I think, like, good, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, one second, Mr. Hospital. Attorney Rinaldi, I think your microphone may be muted, but you want to respond? Attorney Rinaldi, I see your icon and your name. Are you able to unmute your microphone?
Mr. McGinnley, I know Attorney Rinaldi also had a hearing in town in Hazleton City I read in the paper. I don't know what time their meeting was.
Well, I see his name and his icon on the the screen, but it has it as as muted.
Well, if I could speak while he's muted, Mr. Chair, I'd appreciate it.
No problem. We'll give him some time. Go ahead, Mr. Hoss.
Yeah, I I think Kendra has a very, very legitimate question. I think what the correct answer for question comes down to is developer going to develop in good faith? Is he negotiating in good faith? And I'm I'm saying that because I was there, I was, I remember the Trammell Crow project there in Hanover, which Mr. Raybo said at the beginning of of the public comment there that in good faith, we negotiate, they came in, majority council approved the 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 LURDA, which really was more of a K O Z designation. But because it was like an eight-year tax abatement with a very miniscule miniscule get back to the county the last two years or so. But really, what we're what we're asking is that, okay, if you're serious about developing this, are you going to stay for the long haul? Or are you going to play the shell game like Trammell Crow did and make a profit on the back of Luzern County taxpayers? Because that's exactly what happened. So I would like to recommend that we remove the does not terminate portion of section three point four and replace it.
Three point four, did you say?
Yes, sir. I'll read it in its entirety in a second, but remove the the portion that says does not terminate and add terminates. So let me let me gather it here, Mr. Chair. I'll read it in its entirety. Let me just get up the the page forty one there. So it would say then again, that's on page forty one for everybody, section three, section three point four. So it says in in its entirety, the exemption from taxes granted under this resolution does not terminate upon the sale or exchange of the property. All right, so pretty straightforward. So remove does not terminate and add terminates. So if the developer says, yeah, we want to, we we're going to be here for the long haul, we're going to develop this property, we're going to be here for ten, twenty years or whatever it takes, whatever the timeframe is. If they bolt, it's null and void. It protects the Luzern County taxpayers and it demonstrates the good faith on their part. That's my motion.
Your motion, do we have a second for for Mr. Haas?
I'll second that, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? Anyone on the question? The motion is.
This is Leanne.
One question.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Sigmund, and then Ms. McDermott, I think is next. Go ahead.
Um, there's been a lot of references to what happened Trammell Crow. I did not know anything about that. Could you just explain the what happened with Trammell Crow?
I could, I could, Sheila, and you're lucky because, you know, I I got to wear that. I got to own that one. And they came in here and said, hey, look, we want to develop your property there in Hazleton. We think it's a good deal. We're ready to break ground. And they came in and we had a tax abatement. Again, it was a LURDA, but it was from what my memory, it was like a a seven-year tax abatement, a hundred percent. And the last two or three years, it phased out like ninety percent abatement, eighty percent, and then it was a hundred percent after ten years. Well, they turned around and sold it within within a very short period of time, that same year, to another developer, and they made millions off us. So the land was valuable. We were sold a bill of goods and the council members had to eat that. And since then, I'm rightfully skeptical of these LURDA and these K O Z plans because I've been burned before. And so I, again, I hope you all understand that, but I hope you can learn from my good faith and other members' good faith here that we don't repeat the same mistakes.
Mr. Haas, I think the land was in Hanover Township and not Hazleton, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Ms. Sigmund, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. McDermott, I think you had a comment or question?
Well, I I guess I'd like to hear Mr. Haas said that he had three amendments, I believe.
That's what he said, yes.
So I I don't want the deal, I don't want to break the deal, so I'd like to know what the other amendments are before.
Just vote on my other amendments. No, in all seriousness, the second one is just, it's house stressing because on page forty two, section seven, it says, there's language about any subsequent owner, and I would just delete that portion too. So that's that's my second one, but I'll make that in just a second if if this one prevails.
I have a question also about that. Okay, so a new buyer came in for that particular property. And we still did get taxes. It's just it was just that that previous owner left without paying any taxes, right? So we didn't lose, I know you're saying it made you look bad, but you didn't lose any money. It was just a new buyer came in and then took over, right? What did that make it?
Not necessarily. Yeah, the county, because we gave, we gave, we had the ten-year abatement in the LURDA, a giant abatement, and they made a profit. They turned, they made millions of dollars off remarketing the deal that we had with them in good faith. That they were going to develop it. They sold the rights off to another, to North Point, and they in turn developed it. So again, Luzern County taxpayers, we lost on millions of dollars of value in a property that was said was worthless, but lo and behold, it wasn't nearly as worthless as we thought or as we were told.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Haas, and how did North Point work out?
Pretty good. Or not too good. Fair. Yeah, I I hear, Chris, but the 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 point is, again, that we 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 gave away an option for taxpayers. We could have got a lot bigger value. We could have been we could, that could turn out in many different ways. We could have got a a better deal regarding the LURDA. Like I suggested at the time, scale it back like a ninety percent, eighty percent, go through for ten years. But instead, now that's going to sit there tax-free. Yes, there there, it was a successful project in that the land is now developed. But again, everybody else in town is going, where's my LURDA? Where's my tax payment? Everybody else that owns a business around here that's employing county workers, that's the residents of Luzern County, rather. And they're saying, where's mine? And I just want, it's fair. This demonstrates, again, good faith on the part of the developer. They're not going to turn around and sell this off. It's it, this is an easy one because this should not break any deal if the person's coming in good faith.
Mr. McGinnley, could I, real quick, we were asked before to comment on, obviously, this could end up being a deal breaker. I just think it's important that everyone understands the way that these things work. Developers many times come in and develop an a turnkey project and then turn it over at some point to another company that's that has expertise in being able to run the project. The project has a certain value. The project, as it sits here now with a ten-year LURDA, with development of a certain amount of land has a certain value, no matter whether developer owns it and then runs it after it's over or developer develops it and then sells it. There would have been no difference if that developer and whatever development Mr. Haas was talking about had kept the property and then just charged market rents that were high enough and gave them a return that was high enough to cover the same type of return that the purchaser of the of the development got. This is not a a business and just the concept. I I don't know what the details are of this, but this concept is no more offensive to Luzern County taxpayers than if the developer keeps it the entire time. Because this is all built into value. The project has a certain value as it sits here right now. And it it's not going to change whether or not it's developed and sold or developed and utilized by that same company and and rented out or or run by that same company. The value is the value. It's present value of the future returns. So it this is not anything that should Luzern County government should not take offense to to that type of activity. That's how developers work.
Peter, with all your. You're, you're, we're representing the people Luzern County. That's what I'm I'm negotiating from that, and you sound like you're negotiating for the the developer.
No, I'm explaining, I'm explaining to, I'm explaining to council member, we were asked to comment on removal of that section, and we know that if we remove that section, council members will have to take the risk that maybe the developer walks, and that's fine. But I'm explaining.
That's not fine.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's fine that that happens. I'm I'm trying to explain that it's important that council members don't view that specific provision as a slap in the face to Luzern County taxpayers because as we sit here, the value is the value, and I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. My position here was just to educate everyone on how developers work. And the fact that developers could develop and sell or develop and keep it. But the bottom line is, as we sit here, the value is the value. And that's just how it is. I don't, however, council decides, you decide. But we were asked to comment on removal of that section. I think it's important that that council has all the information and they could take it one way or the other. It's up to council.
This this is one thing that I had asked, like, first, to work this out before the vote. Was there any way to do all of this? Or did it have to be the public?
I would say typically, these types of things would be done by a committee. It would be something that we would do, not in the public, in the public eye. Negotiations would take place at some point with the committee. You know, it it really puts everyone in a in a spot, and and Mr. Haas had hit the nail on the head. I mean, well, I'm giving, trying to give information, but the appearance could be that I'm I'm negotiating for the developer, and all I'm doing is trying to educate everyone on how this process works. And that's it. I don't, I don't have any preference one way or the other. And I should.
I don't feel confident voting on that, not knowing if it's going to break the deal or not. So that's why I'm saying right after that last meeting, I had sent an email that we need to work out the negotiations, and of course, that that didn't happen. So here we are. But I think that would have been much more beneficial than sitting here and talking about it now if, you know, we don't know if it is a deal breaker, and Mr. Rinaldi is not on right now, I guess, but you know, I can't vote on it not knowing.
Well, I, my recollection is at a previous meeting, Attorney Rinaldi did say that it was a deal breaker. I can tell you, we have Shannon Lipsansky prepared numerous amendments in case council wanted to take different, a different tact, a different route, including, including you know, terminating the LURDA if there's another sale. But the Office of Law does not have a position as to whether council should approve this or not. But, you know, Attorney DeLuca is trying to explain to you what the consequences are of a particular action. But we have various amendments ready to go depending on what council's position is.
Okay, so what about something, money in lieu of? I think something.
We have a pilot, yes. We have that, we don't have the pilot ready because we have to negotiate the terms. But there was an offer for, I think it was ten thousand dollars a year for the life of the LURDA. But there's other terms that need to be addressed in the pilot agreement, and we were not able to hammer that out at this time. But the amount is ten thousand dollars a year is what was offered.
Mr. McGinnley?
Mr. Pedri, then someone else is trying to speak.
Yeah, it was Matt.
Sorry, I defer to Mr. Vog.
All right, Mr. Vog first, then.
I was just gonna say, I think it was pretty clear, Mr. Rinaldi in his expressions last week or two weeks ago, that if anything's changed, they're going to pull pull away. But my question for the solicitors is if the developers do sell the property, does the county receive a transfer tax?
I could take that one, Mr. McGinnley.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, yes, we would, Mr. Vog. The state, the county, and the school district all will get a transfer tax. Actually, the county just gets a commission for a transfer tax if the property is sold. And the municipality, the state would all get a a portion if they if the if if the item is actually sold, so that would actually be bringing more money to those to those entities. And I I'm waiting, I I know, I'm I'm trying to get in touch with somebody at the Hazleton City meeting to see if Mr. Rinaldi is complete with that meeting. I'm I'm wanting to hear back from them.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from them. I'll do it, Mr. Chairman.
One second. Mr. Vog, did that answer your question?
Yeah, we don't know the amount, right? The percentage of the tax?
Transfer tax is two percent, but I'm, you know, I certainly could be wrong.
Yeah, that also depends on whether or not they transfer the entity itself or the, the land. I mean, presumably, if they transferred the project, that, that they would get the, the transfer tax. But I know that, uh, there are, there are possibilities for transferring without.
Yeah. You, you are correct.
Definitely. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Haas, you wanted to speak, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do. The transfer tax, that's a red herring. It's two percent. The property is virtually worthless in its current state. So therefore, you ain't no money on that. That, that's, that, that's not accurate. So again, the value is in the LERTA. What were, the store we, we could potentially give away is in the LERTA. This demonstrates good faith that the developer is serious. That's all it is. There's, you don't have to wordsmith it. You don't have to look at, at, at business. That's what it is. It proves, it demonstrates good faith if the developer is sincere, or if they're gonna turn around and make a profit on it at our expense. That's all it is.
But the value, the land is invaluable now. If they, if no one goes there, it's less valuable.
Hold, hold on one second. I think Mr. Vog is trying to speak, then Mr. Sneed, then Ms. Sadeeman, okay?
No, I'm good. I'm just saying, there's no value to the land if no one's using it.
That's right. Mr. Sneed?
A, a few bullet points here. This, this is very serious, is what's going on here tonight. I mean, like Mr. DeLuca said, if this is a deal breaker, he walks. You know what happens here? Hazelton's in Act forty-seven right now. The land which we are talking about is gonna be remediated by the, by this developer. There were two landfills there. That land's worthless. Nothing's ever gonna be put on that land. To be point blank here. This guy's willing to put five hundred and sixty million dollars, his own money into this development. Also, he, he, he relates us that he would hire local contractors. That's nine hundred local construction jobs that we're losing. Building permits and other fees, right off the top, two point four million dollars would go to the city of Hazelton, which is in Act forty-seven. The potential five thousand jobs. The most important thing, five thousand jobs. EIT tax from five thousand jobs, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. The business around this development prospers. So not only are you getting environmental benefits, with all the utilities coming in, they're putting water, sewer, electricity, and remediating that land, you're getting environmental and economic benefit coming off a pandemic. This is a no-brainer. I urge my colleagues, colleagues, the vote is a hundred percent tonight.
Ms. Sadeeman?
No, uh, first of all, Mr. Sneed, uh, just gave a very forceful argument for why this, um, should happen. I just thank Mr., uh, Durova for telling, DeLuca for saying that, um, he is explaining the way developers work. I worked for a real estate developer. I worked for Seymour Holtzman, and that's exactly what happened. It's exactly what Trump does. I mean, he gets the advantage and then sells it for greater money. I, I, with Tranel and Crow, the only, I don't understand. We didn't know how valuable that land was. It would have just sat there because we never knew it. It was maybe worth a great deal, but it was remediated, and then it was worth it.
Anyone else?
The Holtzman properties still are vacant down there off Wilkes-Barre Boulevard. The value is in the LERTA. We are creating the value here as Luzerne County council people. We're creating the value. Okay? It's like the Federal Reserve, they're printing money, they're creating money. We're creating value here. It's not fair to other people. That area up there, this is, this is pro Hazelton. It's pro Butler and Hazel Township, all the surrounding communities that are going, where's my LERTA? So again, to not hold people's feet to the fire in good faith is a disservice to every single taxpayer in Luzerne County, especially the people living in Hazelton. It's not fair. And it's not gonna be a deal breaker. It just demonstrates the good faith of the developer.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, can we call the question?
Who else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
It's a quick statement. Uh, thank you, Attorney DeLuca, for, for stating the value is the value. I appreciate that. Harry, I can't support that whatsoever, where I says not, this is going to be a deal breaker. I will not support that all, at all, and I will not let the people in Hazelton down. We need that up there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, so, so here's the scenario. So the land's worth a hundred thousand dollars. We give them a LERTA, and now the land becomes more valuable because there's a LERTA. That's what Harry's saying. We all get that. I am not against the project. I agree with Mr. Sneed, a hundred percent. We need to do something, but we need to make sure that, so what's to stop the developer from buying the property, while he owns it now, get the LERTA, turn around and sell the land to somebody else, and that person doesn't develop the land and doesn't create the jobs and doesn't do anything with it. He just sits on the land until he gets some money together so he can work on the land. Now we have a developer who we thought in good faith was gonna start the project, and now the developer sold it because he says, eh, you know what? I don't, I don't want to get involved in this. I'll sell it to somebody else. I get that. That's the way business is done. But we are not, we're in, we're issuing a LERTA because we want the people to benefit from the LERTA by creating jobs, building a factory or wherever he's gonna build there, and creating the opportunities for people to get taxes and all the other things that come along with new development. If we don't protect that investment by telling the guy, if you want to sell it to somebody, maybe we need to put language in that if you transfer it, the LERTA goes with it, but there must be some understanding from the person you send it to that he's actually gonna develop the land. Because he can sell it to somebody and not do, do anything with the property and sit on the LERTA and never do a thing with it. And you'll still have a strip mine pit full of contaminants and never be developed, and that can really happen. All he has to do is use the LERTA for the leverage to sell the land. So now the land becomes a five hundred dollar piece of land, and he sells it, and the guy sits on it and never does nothing with it, and we have no say in it. We can't pull the LERTA away. We can't do anything. And he's sitting on a prime piece of property that he wants not to develop. That's the problem with that. I think we need to make sure that the developer, if it's a deal breaker, then maybe he has plans of doing that. Maybe that's the reason why he won't agree to the deal. Maybe he has somebody in the wings that wants to buy the land. I don't know. But I think that people have a right to be protected for their investment on their taxes that they're giving away.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr., yes, I just, Mr. DeLuca, um, isn't, aren't there provisions in the LERTA? Or in the actual, you know, discussion of LERTA itself that requires you to do improvements? You can't just sit on it.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, uh, Ms. Sadeeman, I, as far as this one goes, I was speaking in general terms. I know that, uh, uh, Ramilda has been involved directly in, uh, in looking at, at the LERTA. Um, I couldn't answer that. I do know generally that is the case. I was speaking more from, you know, from the perspective of what removal of that term could mean for the deal and, and that approval of, of the deal with that term in it really does not, uh, act as any sort of, uh, detriment to, to Luzerne County. So, uh, is Ramil, Ramilda, are you still on?
Yeah, I, I am on, uh, you know, uh, there, uh, the, uh, developer who gets the LERTA uh, does have to, uh, uh, you know, have an improved, you know, do an improvement. I don't know what, I can't tell you what the extent of the improvement is. Uh, but there has to be an improvement in order to qualify.
But there's no requirement that he has to do an improvement, is there, in the LERTA? Only when he does the improvement, he gets the LERTA, correct?
He does the improvement and then the LERTA is, uh, accepted, yes.
Right, but he doesn't have to do it. He could sit there with a vacant piece of property and not do anything with it until he decides to get his money together to do it.
But then he doesn't get the LERTA. Then he doesn't get the benefit of the LERTA. And then you go back to the argument or, uh, to the explanation that Attorney DeLuca gave you. So I don't, I, I, you know, I, I, if I'm a developer, I don't know why I want to buy, you know, invest that much money in a, a parcel of land, get a LERTA, and then just sit on it.
So, so make, under, let, let me understand clearly that the LERTA is not on a timeframe. The ten-year LERTA goes on the improvement when he gets an improvement. It doesn't, so if you sit on a piece of property for fifteen years and then finally put an improvement on it, that's when your LERTA starts.
I don't, that I'm not, I, I, I don't think that that's accurate, but I will, uh, I, I will confirm that one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's my, that's my concern, is he doesn't have to develop the land. He has the LERTA sitting on the side. So when he ever does develop the land, he enjoys that LERTA.
All right.
But you have to use that, you have to, you have to develop the land within a certain amount of time. You can't just sit on the land in perpetuity and then get the LERTA. And I, I don't believe that's even the way, uh, the, uh, the language, uh, is, you know, speaks to that, but I will confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Attorney Rinaldi is now on the line with us, so maybe we can, uh, direct some things to him. Attorney Rinaldi?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, Mr. McGinley. Uh, I apologize. I was in your meeting, and then I had to appear before Hazelton City Council, so I appreciate you, and I'm good, I'm glad the debate is going, you know, where it's going, so I can answer any and all questions that anybody may have.
Very simple question, I think, to start with. Uh, you know, we have the information in front of us in regards to the proposed resolution.
Yes.
Uh, and there's been some discussion about some amendments to that. Uh, and part of the discussion deals about, you know, if indeed there are amendments to that proposed resolution, that's part of our agenda this evening. What effect does that have on the deal?
Unfortunately, this is the last iteration of, of the LERTA agreement. Um, my, my client needs to move forward. Uh, this is the last piece of the puzzle with regards to LERTA. Um, you know, I've just heard some of the debate, you know, bouncing back and forth about if there's a transfer, if there's no improvements, if my client sits with it. My client's not in the position to just sit with a piece of property for the consideration that he's gonna be paying for it, the environmental cleanup that he has to complete. It's a significant investment. In my previous discussions and my presentations before, um, the county council, my client is looking to invest in Hazelton and Hazel Township, Luzerne County, over five hundred million dollars. I don't think you see many developers of that size and scope willing to invest. Um, he's taking a large risk, one that he's willing to accept. But he needs this as part of the selling point to the K O Zs or other LERTAs within the county or even outside of the county in order to compete. My client, if there's no improvements, no development, there is no benefit for my client. The improvement or the benefit that the county would retain, uh, I explained this earlier. On the total approximately four hundred acres, the county, city, and, and school district receive approximately fourteen thousand dollars. Those amounts would continue unless there's a reassessment or a change in the millage rates. If there's any improvements placed on the property, buildings completed, moved into, construction, uh, all those improvements, my client would receive a LERTA benefit for a period of ten years. My client has increased the amount that he'd be willing to turn over to the county, and that's a rolling clock, and then in ten years, I explained, fully developed, the county and the school districts and the taxing bodies would, would receive between three and a half to six million dollars.
But my question, Attorney Rinaldi, was, there was discussion about amendments to the proposed resolution that's in front of us. If there are any amendments that change that resolution, what effect does that have on this murder proposal?
I, I, I need to know what those specific amendments are. I hope, you know.
Well, the first, first amendment that Mr. Haas proposed is to remove section three point four and page forty-one of our amendment.
And just give me a moment, I'll get to that section.
Which essentially is, if you sell it, or given, you know, sold to a different developer, your LERTA drops off.
Well, I, I, I hope you understand, you know, these types of projects, my client may be the end user.
Yeah.
Uh, the end user may be Fortune one hundred companies. I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead, finish.
Oh, I, I thought there was a question there. I'm sorry.
Well, there may be, but we'll get to that.
Okay, um, the limitation that would be placed on my client, um, I, I don't see the downside of the county. Uh, they still have the clock running, no matter who the owner is. It's for a limited period, that ten-year period. And if, if someone else comes in and buys, buys or builds something bigger, that's only a benefit more for the county or the other taxing bodies for that matter.
Okay. Mr. Haas, you want to indicate your second amendment, I believe?
Yeah, thank, thank, thanks for coming out, Mr. Rinaldi. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Again, my justification is to, we've been burned before to hold the, the developer's feet to the fire in that they're not going to bolt, they're not gonna turn around the property and then sell it at a profit. Because we add value by putting a LERTA on it, and we, we've, we've had that happen before. You know, the developer in Hanover Township, you, you might be familiar with, with the firms that we're talking about. So that's the, that's the point of that, and, um, we're just looking at good faith from the developer, from your client.
Well, obviously, my client's in this for, for the profit. Uh, there's no doubt about that. Let, let that be no mistake. Um, but as far as outweighing that benefit or not being able to transfer that to an end user, um, that's a severe limitation, especially for my client. My client's a developer. Uh, he's not gonna be potentially the end user of the property. You have to imagine the size and scope of these buildings. Um, the smallest is a half million, the largest is two point two million square feet. Floor space that we can go up to a hundred and fifty feet high, the cubic footage, square footage is tremendous. Um, those take special end users. Uh, these are not any-day companies. These are large Fortune one hundred companies that have shown interest in this site. Um, to take that away, you know, would severely limit the, the final end users from, from coming to the site.
Okay, does that answer everyone's question on amendment number one? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Haas, Mr. Griffith, to remove section three point four on page forty-one of our agenda, correct, Mr. Haas? Correct? Okay.
Correct.
Roll call on that amendment, please.
Mr. Darbitt?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Nope.
Mr. Adel?
Yeah.
Ms. Edman?
You have to unmute Ms. Sadeeman.
I know. No.
Mr. Sneed?
No.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban?
Urban, you're muted also, Mr. Urban.
Sorry, I said yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Amendment fails. Mr. Haas, you have a second amendment?
Yeah, I, I do. Actually, Mr. Rinaldi, my other two amendments are kind of moot at this point, so I won't be making those. So thank you.
No problem. Anyone else? Well, we have a motion by Mr. Sneed, second by Mr. Perry, to adopt a resolution providing the tax exemption for new construction in deteriorate areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Act. Any other question?
I have a question, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
Um, I want to check with the Office of Law, this LERTA, this LERTA is a tax abatement, and that should be an ordinance. Is that not correct? We are altering taxes.
Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crocambeau, you have, you have a question there from Mr. Griffith? Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crocamo, you have, you have a question there from Mr. Griffith?
Fito, you wanna take that, we did discuss this.
You, you may have to refresh my memory, but I, I know when we talked about it, that the, uh, the act allowed for, uh, for it to be done by ordinance or resolution.
And the charter says levying, uh,
That's right, that's right, and the charter says levy of taxes.
Okay, anyone else with a question?
And I, I certainly appreciate the solicitor's opinion, but when they say levy it, and, I mean, we're dealing with taxes here, whether it says levy or forgiving taxes, I mean, okay, we're gonna split hairs, but that's fine, I'll, I'll accept their opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Edman? Ms. Edman?
Wait a minute.
You're muted, Ms. Edman.
You're still muted?
Yep.
Aight. Let's hope it stays like this, okay, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No. And, and I will qualify that by saying that the reason I'm saying no is because of that ability for him to transfer ownership of this lerta to somebody. Not because I'm not in favor of the project, I am in favor of the project.
Mr. Haas?
I feel the same, but no.
Ms. How?
No.
Ms. Nick Derbit?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
Motion carries. Moving down to number six. Motion adopted, or placing a question on May eighteen, two thousand twenty-one primary election ballot to amend Article eight, section eight point zero four, Luzerne County Home Rule Charter, this bill of opposition of the election board. We introduced this, uh, motion at our last meeting. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Who's that, please? Mr. Urban, thank you, second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, on the question?
On, on the question, oh, go ahead, Sheila.
Yes, well, I listened to the public on this, and, um, there were some concerns, I mean, Mr. Raybo stated a lot of election law. So, if that is the law, and it's mandatory, then why would we put it out for a vote even? It would either be part of the election law and we would follow it or not. So, I think the fact that the solicitors haven't brought this up, it, it's not like, um, I, I don't think that this is an issue, I mean, it really, if, if it is an issue, then it's that, as they're saying, then it should be, um, mandatory.
Okay, Griffith?
Uh, yes, and I appreciate, uh, Ms. Edman's comment. Uh, I, you know, I put this, uh, ordinance out there because it needs, we need to do something, and it's, this is not something against the board itself, as much as it is about the problems that we run into year in and year out with the board and the manager and the bureau, and all the things that we're finding out through the inquiry committee that's, I mean, it's just matters or procedural things that need to be fixed more than it's, you know, just somebody's just not doing their job. I think the Election Bureau did, did a commendable job considering what they were up against this year. But we've had this issue in the past, we've had issues in twenty fourteen where the resolutions, because they didn't think the board did the proper thing for certifying elections, and that was the reason for behind adding the county council to it was, because number one, there's legislative body sitting there. And in the past, and all sixty-one other counties, there's an executive branch or legislative branch sitting on the election board. All the other counties, well, I shouldn't say all the other counties, but most of the other home rule counties all have elected officials on their board. I understand the reason, as a charter drafter, I understand the reason behind only putting citizens on the election board. But it doesn't work well for us, because we don't have, we don't have the ability to get that institutional knowledge, I think, that's required on the Board of Elections, and we always have that communication mis- uh, issue with the manager and the Board of Elections. So, that's the problem that we run into, because the manager clearly in our charter has the exclusive right to run the executive branch, and has the exclusive right to dictate to his board or his bureau what they need to do. And the problem we have now is we have a board who's at loggerheads with the bureau, trying to get the bureau to do things without going through the manager. And that gets to be a real problem, because now the bureau is confused as who's giving them the orders, is it the manager, or is it the board? And that's where we're ending up ten years down the road past the charter. And I think that's one of the reasons why we don't, didn't have these problems when it was a commissioner form, because be, obviously by its nature, the executive and legislative branch was sitting on that board just because of the way they were formed. In other home rule counties like Allegheny County, you have council members sitting on the board, and you also have the county executive sitting on the board, all elected officials. The, uh, other counties that I've, I've notated that also do the same thing is Lackawanna County, Home Rule County, all elected officials sitting on the board. You have Northampton County, they get all citizens on the board, but they have the county executive, who is an elected official, appoint those people, and those people are given to them by the party chairmans of the two different parties, of who he picks from. So, it's gonna be partisan by nature. And, and right now, our election board is partisan, we have three Democrats and we have two Republicans. So, you do have a majority of Democrats on the election board. You're not gonna get away from that, that's just the makeup of the board, regardless. Um, Lehigh County, same situation, it's an elected county manager, and you have two citizens sitting on the board. Allegheny County have three members, two county council members and one elected council, uh, executive. Delaware County, same thing. So, we have, we have a, we have the, the, the form out there that having elected officials on the election board is not a problem. I, I don't see why we have this hand wringing over, oh, we're gonna put elected officials, and the ability for somebody to accuse me of doing this because it's a political stunt. This is about good government, this is, all this is about, is trying to make this thing work better. So, we don't have these problems in the future, that's all it's about. I could care less if you have three Democrats or three Republicans. The concern I have now is we have two Democrats and two Republicans to pick a chair. And now it becomes partisan, because the Democrats pick a Democrat for chair, or Republicans pick a Republican for chair. That's gonna be partisan, you're not gonna get around that, the whole scenario. I think maybe the issue, uh, in hindsight, when I drafted the ordinance, maybe what I should do is make an amendment, and I'm, I'm gonna make, probably make this amendment based on the comments from people, is to change it from seven to five and put the county manager on that board. Because I think as, as members of the Inquiry Committee can certainly attest, I think that's, that's the rub that's going on between the Board of Elections getting their job done, is because they don't communicate well with the manager, because the manager's just interested in getting the job done, that's his job. He wants to get the board done, get the mail ballots out, all that stuff. He doesn't communicate with the board, and then the board gets mad, because they don't know what's going on. Let's just put the manager on the board. Then there's no problem with communication, and he, and then you have five members with the manager as the board member, but, uh, that was the reason why I made that ordinance, was because I just think that the Board of Elections in its current form doesn't work well. And I don't know if, I think the ability to put legislative and, uh, council members on there would help that problem immensely. And as Mr. Shiner said, if it doesn't work, we can always put the question back on the ballot. But we don't even know if it's gonna be accepted, the voters have to vote on this. We're not gonna make it happen, the voters have to decide. So, why don't we just let the voters decide, just like the Constitution of the United States, voters decide. We've changed that many times. We changed the issue with the board members sitting on the board that are, uh, working for the county. We changed that, that wasn't a problem, putting that question on the ballot, why is this one such a problem?
Well, anyone else?
Yeah, Steve here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, you know, first of all, the Board of Elections and registration is, it, right now, it should be an autonomous board that has a lot of statutory powers that they don't even know they have. You know, even since the Office of Law hasn't even provided them with Title twenty-five or, or the Pennsylvania Election Code. You know, and, and it's really not partisan bickering, but,
We did, we, we did.
Ramella, please stop interrupting me, please, all the, you do this all the time.
Time out, let's be cordial and professional, please. Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
When I talk, she doesn't need to interrupt me every single time. If you have something to say, say it after I'm done, please.
Please, go ahead, Mr. Urban.
All right, thank you. I said, so, you know, it, 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 it really, you know, isn't about partisan bickering at all, but reaffirming and reinstalling like accountability, integrity and confidence in, in our election administration and processes. Um, you know, quite honestly, county council members are citizens of this county too. We, we lead as elected officials. We are part of this county, so putting us on the board is, is not really something that's really partisan. It's about making sure that the numbers are adjudicated properly, that we don't have deceased individuals being counted, you know, during the process, which I sent the spreadsheet out, showing that there were twenty-three people that died between ten-six and eleven-three that were counted in this year's general election, when clearly the guidance from the Department of State says those votes should be kept, put aside. Now, you know, there's other issues that, that I see. You know, as, as being a member of the public that's been involved in election process for many, many years, you know, that, the execution of last year's election was probably by far the worst that I've ever seen. You know, I, I mean, because the numbers don't, they just don't match up, what, what's in sure is not really what's been cast. I mean, and, and those are in the numbers themselves, the devil's in the details, if we pull the reports, we're gonna find out the truth. And, and that's really all we're out, out to find out, is what, what truly happened, what the actual numbers are, votes cast, what, and, and versus what's actually shown in the sure system. There were so many breakdowns that we wanna fix those breakdowns. I'm tired of our county being an embarrassment nationwide, because we can't execute an election process correctly and by the book. You know, and, and unfortunately for the previous director, management sent her up for failure. They put somebody in a position that didn't belong in there, a- and it failed. You know, and the things that I am uncovering from outside sources, inside sources, is astronomical. And we need people in there that understand election process, understand that there are statutory requirements that, that have to be met, have to understand that the Board of Elections and registration, okay, are defined in, in the state statute. They have to be com- compliant with it. The law has to be followed uniformly across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, uniformly, we can't deviate just because we're home rule, okay? I mean, yes, the composition currently in our charter was, was made up by the charter drafters, and, and what looked good on paper at the time is, is not working to the best of our abilities here in Luzerne County and to our satisfaction. You know, a- at least to some of us, we see how, you know, haphazard and bad, you know, it, it really is. When there's questions about more votes being cast than voters, which we have a problem, um, we wanna get to the bottom of all of this, and the only way to truly look at it is to be able to access all that information, look at it with, with fresh eyes, and different set of eyes, yeah, we're, we are, are partisan in, in some nature. But you could also be on the receiving end as my colleagues, we, all of us are elected officials. You could be on the receiving end of a bad election, which you're gonna have to challenge someday. May or may not have to do it, because we didn't count the votes correctly. And why didn't we count them correctly, because of process? You know, and if we don't fix that process now, how can you instill that confidence and that faith in the voters out there? There's nothing wrong with tossing it to the voters and saying, hey, let you decide to change a charter, if you don't like it, vote no. If you like it, vote yes, the charter was supposed to be a living and breathing document. And, and that, you know, we stymie the public by not allowing them to vote on the initiative. This is their government, this is our government, we all have to live in Luzerne County. You know, I'm tired of being embarrassed, because we do things so wrong, we don't cooperate too well. You know, I don't wanna have beef with the Solicitor's Office every single time that I ask a question, but I expect answers and I expect correct factual information results. And, and currently, that board doesn't know what they're doing. And I wanna help them learn, and I'm sure all of us want to help them learn. But we're doing a very bad job of, of, you know, becoming successful, because we just haven't taught them, we haven't even given them the information, you know, until recently. So, if, you know, the solicitor just gave them Title twenty-five, kudos to you, but it's a little bit too late.
All right. Ms. Crocamo?
Uh, we did provide, uh, Title twenty-five to the board. Uh, and, uh, at the next ABC, uh, meeting, we have the Office of Law will present, uh, a, a process, uh, that we would like to, uh, have for all board members, uh, kind of an onboarding or an introduction, uh, not only to new members, but to, uh, uh, current sitting members, uh, including the election board.
Thank you. Other members of council?
Yes, I just wanna respond to Mr. Urban. First of all, Steve, I really don't think we are an embarrassment throughout the country. Our, many of our things are recognized, many things we do are recognized throughout the country. I don't think there's anybody that's shaming Luzerne County out there, neither in Pennsylvania or the country. Maybe a few years ago, when we had the Kids for Cash scandal, but that is gone. Secondly, by putting the council members on the election board, what makes you think the council members are that much more educated in election law and the statutes than the members of the board? And I thought, as a member of the Inquiry Committee, we are putting together a list of recommendations, which I'm sure is going to say, these are the things you cannot do, and there should be a person or somebody in the Election Bureau that will look at the obituaries between such and such a time and the other, such and such, this defined period of time, and make sure that those people don't vote. These are issues that are not unique to Luzerne County, believe me. And I don't understand your, your, what you're stating in terms of us being able to educate the board.
Well, Sheila, maybe you have it running in many elections, but I, I wanted to respond to.
There may be other members that wanna speak, they have the opportunity, then you'll have it in the second round. Other members of the council would like to speak?
I do, but I'll defer to Steve first.
Well, you get first round, Mr. Haas, and then Mr. Mr. Urban will be second round. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, thanks. You know, I, yeah, I'm having a hard time, because, you know, we're looking at, even after this last election, you know, I, I checked out earlier, just as of January eighteenth, Newsweek poll says that forty percent Americas, Americans think that the newly sworn in president is illegitimate. And why is that? Again, all the concerns were never adjudicated. People had concerns, they weren't, they were never turned up in court, they were, they were never, they weren't judged. And so therefore, we're stuck with this, and at least in our little corner of the world, in Luzerne County, thank God the council unanimously supported an election inquiry, and that we're, we're over, I'm, I'm uncovering a lot of things. And, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna steal the thunder of the committee at some things that we've had. I do, I do wanna mention just a couple, though, here, um, because it's relevant to, to this question. I wish we had a little more time, I wish we weren't under the gun to get this on the ballot with a limited amount of time, because I, I, if we could just meet one or two more times of the election inquiry, present that to council, I think that would also resolve, um, a lot of problems out there. But what Sheila said at the end of this discussion, all, all what I just said really doesn't matter. It comes down to, are, are we in violation of the state statute? And we are, so Sheila, I appreciate that. Let me read again this, and again, from Article nine, section two, Mr. Raybo did a better job than I ever could prior to the meeting, that the legislative body shall be represented on the election board, plain and simple, it's in the state statute. And so it'd have some people, members of the public, come in and, and blast some fellow council members, I mean, political, they're ignorant of the state statute. I mean, this is, this is why we are here, we are here to do, to do the hard work, to ask the questions, to hear from the public, but to, to say stuff like that, for the newspapers on the editorial page to call some of us partisan, I find it extremely offensive, again, I've said it before. We had, we had a, in the prior, um, election director, she first came on board, uh, there was a problem down Hazelton School Board election, I went to bat for that. It wasn't a political race, it wasn't a political issue, it was just, we gotta make it right, so they had a re-vote, a lot of you guys remember that we're here. So, what we're trying to do here is make right. And there were a lot of wrongs. I mean, Steve Urban just uncovered the fact that it looks like we've always heard before, dead people vote in Luzerne County? Well, in 20, in 2020, it looks like they did. Evidently, they did. So that is an embarrassment. I'm, I'm very proud of our county and, and where we are, but some things were just not done well. And it, it is, it's shameful. And this is helping undermine people's confidence in the whole system. If we can't get this straight, I don't know what I'm doing filling the chair up, frankly. So I, I support what Walter wants to do. I might not agree with the entire, the entirety of it, but we got to follow the state statute. It's just right there. So please, members, consider putting this on the ballot. Let the people decide, and if need be, I, I agree with Sheila. We should, we should take action as the council, for God's sakes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else before Mr. Urban?
Uh, yes, this is Leanne.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, the state law does say that, except in counties which have home rule, unless otherwise appointed. So yes, it can change. And I have a question for Mr. Griffiths. With those other counties, the other home rule counties, did you reach out to them? Did you find out if there were any problems with it? I guess if most of the other counties have elected officials on there, is it, is it a problem? I, I feel that it is. However, if a lot of the other counties don't have a problem with it, maybe it's something that should be considered.
Well, I mean, to your, to your question, Ms. McDermott, no, I did not physically reach out or give them a call. But, I mean, 61 of the other counties have the same, have a county commissioner form of government because it's obviously state-county code. So you do have three commissioners sitting on the election board, plus two citizens. So there, obviously, the state legislature doesn't feel that that's a problem either. They would change the state code to not allow the county commissioners to be sitting on that board. So if, if having elected officials on an election board is a problem, I'm sure the state legislature would change it for all 61 other counties as well. I think, I think intent of having a legislative bodies is on there and the executive is because they want to make sure the budgetary functions are followed as the legislative side and is executed according to state laws. And that's why that it works so well for those folks that have the county executive sitting on that board. And, and obviously, in 61 other counties, having the commissioners there because they just interchange their hats. So no, I did not reach out to them personally.
Okay. Anyone else? No, Ms. Urban first, and then Ms. Sigmund, you had, you were next, okay?
All right, so, I mean, quite honestly, you, you've seen all the numerous emails that I spent, you know, numerous hours on. I mean, I've been forthright with the entire council. I mean, I just did not CC the three other committee members that, on the Election Inquirer Committee when I write an email. I mean, some of my emails are very lengthy. They cite law. I, I sort of redline things. I'm, I'm kind of breaking it, broken it down so it was an easy read for all of you to be able to try to convince you that what we're doing is just way out of line compared to what the statutes state. You know, and, and, and that's really what we want to do is to clean up the process so that we are completely in line with the law, with integrity, accuracy, you know, following the Department of State's guidelines, making sure that we're doing everything that we can. So the ballots are protected. The chain of custody is, is, is defined the right way. We have a process and procedure in place. Not that we get returned to sender ballots and they're sitting in a mail train, never canceled out. I mean, those are all different security concerns that I have. And, and, you know, Sheila, I mean, I've, I've been involved in many elections for over 20 years. I think I know a little bit about the process, you know? And you need to have people that know about the process to make it better. Else the common person doesn't know. I mean, you put board that don't know anything about election process, and you're telling them this, you know, they're, they're telling, they're actually confirming or signing off on scattering write-in votes. You can't do that. You have to count them and put them in a ledger as they are. Whether the name is fake or real, it has to go in a book and counted. Okay? And then at the end of the count, you can decide, okay, this person doesn't qualify. That name is Donald Duck, it doesn't qualify, it's a fictitious name. But it has to be recorded for the history of Luzerne County's election process. Okay, it has to be recorded as true and correct. You know, and that's why we, we open ourselves up for litigation in, like in Mr. Donahue's case. Okay? Those are the things that, that, that we've done wrong, we've executed wrong. Your vote matters, even if it's one vote, it matters in Luzerne County. I mean, this year is a local election year. One vote may matter, you know, to someone. A write-in vote has to be counted. You can't, just because it's a presidential year, that that one vote is not going to count, that that vote's getting scattered in the scattered column. And then in the odd years, when we're doing elections, those one votes, we're going to count every single one of them. There has to be consistency in our process. That's all I'm saying. In order to build that consistency, we have to have knowledgeable people on that board. And I'm willing to teach them and help them and guide people. So, you know, that's what I'm trying to say.
So you would be the person that would be sit on the count, uh, the. Then I don't, I mean, we put people on juries for common sense. We put them on as reasonable people, not as put downs that they're just common people. I don't know as much about elections as you do, Steve, but you're basically saying, if I was chosen, I would know so much more than the common people? I think you're the person that knows much more than the run-of-the-mill, the reasonable, the people out there, the public. But who says you're going to be on the board?
I didn't say that.
I thought Mr. Griffiths was going to make an amendment. The council won't be on it. That maybe the manager would be on it in lieu of council, which other counties do. And, um, and we don't pay him, there's no elected official, he's not elected, he's an appointed or, you know, determined by the council. So I just don't understand having council members, which, which is a strict statement in our charter that they could not serve on this board.
Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question. I've been hearing we're in violation of the state law by Mr. Haas, Mr. Urban, Mr. Griffith, and Mr. Raybo. I didn't hear from the Office of Law. Are we in violation?
No, I, I, I don't, I, I don't believe we are. But through the Code Committee, and we've addressed certain issues. And we're going to go, hopefully, line by line as to what certain duties and powers of the Bureau versus the Board. And so we can have some clarification. I've reached out to the Pennsylvania Economy League for their advice and opinion, and I'm reaching out to D C E D. I also want to state for the record that Mr. Donahue's case was dismissed by the Commonwealth Court. I have forwarded the opinion, it leads to the Election Inquiry Committee, and the Supreme Court did not take his appeal. So, uh, you know, we prevailed on the one case that was brought against Luzerne County as a result of the election.
All right. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, you know, as far as the compensation part of it, we don't get compensated any additional monies based on statute. You know, typically, the commissioner form of government is a legislative executive and Board of Elections, plus other boards within their counties. You know, they, they had, wear many, many hats besides three or four. You know, we, we took, like I said, the three-man operation, and then currently it's about 17. 11 of us, the, the five of the, the Board of Election members and, and the county manager. And, and we've added a lot of chaos and layers to all of this. Yeah, we are the budgetary arm. You know, I've laid out a lot of the powers. You know, yeah, you might have to go and verify everything I said, you know, Attorney Crocomo. But I, I pulled out sections of law and tried to make it easy for you to read. And, and, you know, a shall is a shall. You know, so the Board of Elections has the ability to appoint a chief clerk. We've created the umbilical cord to connect the administrative side or the executive branch by, by putting it in our admin code, making, you know, Mr. Parsnick the head or one of his, you know, appointees as the clerk of that office. But really, that power is vested in the Board of Elections based under, under the statute, the statutory, you know, reading. And, and they don't realize that they have the ability to do oaths of office or oath, 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 I'm sorry, you know, like the power to swear people in because they, they have assistant clerks. Anybody that adjudicates anything in there in that office needs to be sworn in. There's a lot of things to read in between the lines. I, I think, like I said, I laid it all out for council to look at. I spent numerous hours of research on all of this, you know, sent you everything openly and honestly. You know, and, and, and obviously, the Office of Law wants to go and verify everything. Go ahead and verify it, you know? I, I think I've did more work on it than the Office of Law has. So, you know, quite honestly, it just needs to be done. I, I believe council should be on it. Yeah, we are the budgetary arm of the county. We get to, you know, and, and, but the Board of Elections can pick their machines, pick their equipment, and come up with the budget based on what, when, one of their powers are. And so they need to know that.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I have to, well, what about the makeup of it? This is Leanne. What about, so, Mr. Griffiths, you put on there the makeup of it. And if I don't agree with that, but maybe want to consider, okay, let's put it on the ballot, we can't change that after we would vote on that tonight. Right? I mean, we'd have to.
What's on, what's on your agenda is the proposed question that would go on the ballot. You're correct on that.
We could amend the ordinance.
You can amend the ordinance, but what's proposed right now is what we're looking at. And depending on what's voted on, that would be the question that would go onto the ballot.
Correct.
Okay? For Mr. Urban, second by Mr. Griffith.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Um, let me make it, let me, let me just make an amendment to this ordinance.
Go ahead.
I want to make the amendment to the ordinance that I want to keep the four citizens on the board, and I want to, and change the chairman to the county manager. That wouldn't, that, now you would have no elected officials on the board, and you would have the county manager there as a person who is the executive side, and you wouldn't have the consternation of having a council member. So I, my amendment, my amendment is to keep the four members of the citizenry on the board, and instead of having the four members pick a chair, the fifth member is the county manager. And at their first meeting in January, they will pick the chair.
We have a second to that amendment.
Yes. So I, I just want to make sure, so you don't want any council members on there?
Only four citizens and the county managers to propose an amendment. Do we have a second?
Clarification.
Sure.
What, we need a second before we can?
Sheila did second it.
Oh, did you second that, Ms. Sigmund?
Yes, actually, I did.
Okay. Do we do have a second? Okay, now the question, go ahead, Ms. Sigmund, you got a question?
So instead of having the four citizens that you're talking about, are they still going to, the two of them going to still be appointed by the board? And then you, how is that going to work, Walter?
It, it'll be the same language it's in the charter currently. It says the council picks the two Republicans and the two Democrats. The only thing that's going to change is you're going to put the manager in place of the chair. So those four people won't pick the chair anymore. It'll be, the county manager will be sitting there. They'll have to pick a chair at their organizational meeting each year or each other year, whichever we, we put into our ordinance. So the first of January or the first of February, I think, is in the ordinance currently is, it was drafted, says that in the first week of February, they will pick a chairman. They can pick a chairman on the first of February. Of those five people, it'll be the county manager, two Republicans, and two Democrats. We picked it, that, just like we do now. The only difference is they aren't picking the chair, we're putting the county manager there in his place. That's the only difference.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
I was just gonna, I'm, I'm not going to support that because, again, my original, my original thesis there is that it violates the state code. We, they need the legislative, the manager's not that, so I won't be supporting that amendment. That's all.
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Ms. Hauck.
So my feeling on this, and I think, you know, as you'll see with the Elections Inquiry Committee, we have really found that a lot of the issues dealing with the role of the Board of Elections, and I think the effective operation of the Board of Elections, the responsibility falls on the administrative code. The charter is vague about the role, the role. And I know there's the, you know, the question about what exactly the role, the board's role is under our charter, but the point of the administrative code is to spell all that out. And we're in the process of reviewing the code. I think we have talked about that in the Elections Inquiry Committee, that it really does need to be spelled out in the, in, in the administrative code. But to go back to the charter, the point of the charter with the ABCs was and is that it's supposed to really involve citizens in the government. And these boards, like the Elections Board, like so many of the other boards, are supposed to be a citizen oversight of the operation that is really independent of the management as well as the council. So it's supposed to be an involvement of citizens of the county that is not controlled by the manager, that is not controlled by county council, except that we appoint the board. But once they're appointed, they have a job to do. And the fact that their role is not clear, I think, is a failing of the administrative code. I don't think it's necessarily a failing of the structure of the board itself.
Yeah, I think as, Ms. Hauck, I think the charter is very clear that the county employee cannot serve on a board. In this case, the county employee would be the manager. And I believe he could not serve on the board because of that provision. Anyone else?
There's county council members on committees. County cares committee.
That's a separate item.
Have county council members on a committee.
Well, that's a separate item, Mr. Griffith, and I really disagree. Correct, so.
Right, okay.
So we have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Ms. Sigmund. Roll call on the motion.
I'm withdrawing my second.
Excuse me?
I would like to withdraw my second because.
Okay, you withdraw the second. Do we have someone else who would second Mr. Griffith's amendment? Very none, the amendment fails. Going back to the motion for the question to be placed on the ballot, Mr. Urban made that motion. Mr. Griffith made the second to that motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Adel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog.
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Nope.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Thank you. We're down to number seven. We have a motion adopted, or is placed in a question on the May 18, 2021 primary ballot to amend the Article 6, Section 6.04A of Luzerne County Home Rule Charter. And as we talked about in the public hearing earlier, this would be the amendment that would allow for the opportunity for the council to have an independent lawyer serving as their solicitor. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Urban? Do we have a second, please?
Second, alter.
Mr. Griffith, on the question.
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Ms. Sigmund.
I had a, I had a hard time, I guess, accepting the argument about the use analogy of a divorce case. They have two different clients. As I read the charter, I think the, at, the Office of Law is. As I read the Charter, um, I think the, at, the Office of Law is representing the county. That's what their job is. That's who their client is. So if the council had its own lawyer, who would they represent? Aren't we all trying to look at the county as the group that we're representing, at the entity we're representing? So I don't understand the argument at law at all. And in terms of disagreements or having it, having different opinions, uh, there were usually four or five lawyers at these meetings with us, not just one. They've all talked about it before. They come to a decision based on the law representing the county and not the manager, not council, the county. And I just have a really hard time understanding what the necessity is of this.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, just a, a brief scenario for, for council. And obviously at some point, I'm sure the Office of Law will weigh in on this. So if the county council wanted to file a mandamus against the manager to make him execute a law that we passed and he hasn't done it, we would have to file a mandamus. Who would file the mandamus on our behalf? Somebody from the Office of Law who works with, uh, the chief solicitor, who is the one who makes the ultimate decisions at the end of the day. Because that's what we were told that the solicitors are not allowed to make independent decisions. They have to confide with the chief solicitor and then they collaborate together to come up with a decision. So that becomes cumbersome for me as a council member. If we want to try and file a mandamus against either the manager or, or anybody else to have, to require them to follow the law, the only thing we can do is to file a mandamus. So that's my first issue. But the second issue in the Charter, as Ms. Sageman said, it says, it says in the section about the solicitor, it says the Office of Law shall serve as legal advisor, attorney and counsel in all ALL official matters to all elected county officials, divisions, departments, bureaus, offices, agencies, boards, commissions and other administrative units of the county government, except where the Charter specifically authorizes an elected official to contract for independent legal opinion and/or temporary special leave counsel. That's the part of the Charter that directs the solicitor. So my question becomes is, at what point does the chief solicitor get the opportunity to get another attorney to represent some authority, board or commission along the way? Because they feel that's better for them, when the Charter clearly says all official matters are done by the Office of Law. So when we have a retirement board that has their own solicitor, because the, the Office of Law says they're conflicted out, that's why they have their own solicitor. So I feel that that's obviously a vibration in the Charter because the Charter doesn't allow you to get a separate solicitor as the retirement board. MHDS, children and youth, they have their own solicitor. Stephen Mann is their solicitor. We pay him sixty-six thousand dollars a year to represent the MHDS. That is a not, that is still part of the county, still funded by the county, but they have their own solicitor. Conflict counsel, that, that's obviously mandated by the court, you know, guardian ad litem, they're, they're mandated by the court. But the biggest issue that I have is the, the solicitor's office is working with the manager to negotiate contracts. They're negotiating with the manager on labor contracts and all of those things. And that same Office of Law is coming to county council and telling us to accept a contract that they were instrumental in negotiating with the manager. That's not an arms-length transaction. I feel that's a conflict for the Office of Law to do that. Even though the Charter says that they are supposed to do that, I think that's where the Charter drafters erred when they were thinking about all elected officials and not giving county council their own solicitor is because they are, they are put in a bad position in the Office of Law to have to support the manager in anything that he does and give opinions to him and bring that same opinion to council and not be biased in, or have a conflict and give us opinion to say, go ahead and vote on it. And we just had that situation with the LARDA, where the Office of Law is giving us an opinion that says, you know, we shouldn't do this. That's their opinion, but they're also working with the manager's office. So I feel that that's the biggest conflict. And it's not to cast aspersions on the Office of Law. It puts them in a bad spot. And that's why I think it's important that we get our own solicitor. And I understand the situation here. If we get our own solicitor and he gives us a bad opinion, yeah, okay, then we're in the same split, we're in the same place. But we have the ability to replace the solicitor. We don't have that opinion, that we don't have that ability right now. And, and we don't have an Office of Law that represents the county in any lawsuits. I don't think there's a single lawsuit in this county since Home Rule to vote where the Office of Law actually litigated it. It's been farmed out or done by somebody else. It's either done by Elliot Greenleaf and Dean or somebody else. But the Office of Law attorneys have not litigated a single case in this county.
Okay. Um, other members of council?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, quite honestly, um, it would be recommended because, I mean, we, we have issues too where, you know, ordinance needed. We might want to write an ordinance, we might want to write resolutions. We, we don't really have a clear template, you know, just to clean up our own language. Um, when we have to create basically something from nothing, you know? Because if you want to create a new ordinance, which is the county law, you have to, you have to write it. And you need, and, and I think quite honestly, the Office of Law is so inundated with, with so many requests all the time. There's just not enough of, of Ramilda to go around. And, and then balls get dropped, you know, and, and things happen. And then we're questioning them. It's not that we want to be contentious or argumentative, but we expect results. Some of us expect them a lot sooner than others. And when we ask for information, we want, want it almost instantaneously at times. And if we have our own solicitor, they could work on projects for council, you know, in, in totality and, and really dedicated resource to us. It's not really to be contentious, but there are going to be times that, that we challenge each other, you know, legislative versus executive branch. You know, what happens if, if, if a council member feels that they have a power that's statutorily, you know, states in, in some statute in the Commonwealth law? And, and we want to exercise that power, but then the Office of Law says, no, the Charter trumps that and we want to contest it, you know? So you have to have somebody on our side. And I don't believe, you know, most of the opinions at this point are, are, are seemingly biased for the executive side, uh, in, in many cases. That's just my own experience and my own opinion, so.
Okay, my, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead, Ms.
Um, I said this the last time that this came up for a vote. This, this, our side, their side, his side, her side, this shouldn't exist. We are Luzerne County, the executive branch, the legislative branch, whatever branch you want to talk about. We are one county, one Office of Law to represent us. We shouldn't, you know, if you take one side or the other, everyone's side is for the county. Everyone's out to better the county, council, the executive branch, the administrate, the administration. Everyone wants what's best for Luzerne County. I, I, I mean, that's, that's how I see it. I don't see it as side, I just wanted to put my two cents in, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, could I answer some of the issues? Uh, this is Vito.
See if we have any council members first and certainly Mr. Duca. Anyone else in the council? There are none, Mr. Duca. Oh, so go ahead, Ms. Sageman.
Chair, Luzerne County, frankly, Luzerne County is the eleven representatives here. We are the ones that are tasked with representing the people. There are a lot of people out there, and I keep on saying this, they're really upset. Really upset about how things are going. And a, again, maybe it's, maybe it's the portion that I talk to and not everybody does. But I'm just saying with this, if you asked me this eight years ago about if we need our own solicitor, I would have said no. Because I was sick and tired under the old form of government of having different departments sue each other, take each other to court. That was a total travesty too. And we, we've passed that. And now we're in this, this, this new, newer grayer area about where do we go from here? Now that the home rule government has kind of taken hold here. We're, we're trying to iron out the kinks. And I tell, I, I, I think I'm a pretty reasonable guy. I'm pretty mild-mannered. This has been a pretty tough year for me with a lot of nonsense that I've seen here. But, you know, I don't ask that much and I, I do not get the services that I need to represent the people that I represent, all three hundred and eighteen thousand of them. When I have, when I write my own ordinances, I don't, I don't hear back from the Office of Law. I ask for information, I don't hear it. I need somebody that is, is not off helping in other areas of the county. I need somebody that's going to be responsible to me as the elected official for the people of, of Luzerne County. And it's, it's been, it's been very frustrating. I've got a lot of apologies. I'm not trying to, to throw anybody on the bus, but it's been very difficult. I need somebody that is going to be accountable and responsible. I'm sick of writing my own stuff. I'm sick of asking for information. I'm sick of, of hearing opinions that are, are, go against with what, what really I, I think is the right direction to take. And we've, we've seen that even this meeting tonight. It's, we really need to change because, uh, I, I see where Steve's coming from. Some members feel like they're, they're less, that they're not, their, their, their needs aren't being met like maybe some other, they're not as important as, as some other areas. And it's, it, it's inherently unfair and it's, it's just not working.
Okay. Mr. Duca, you have the floor.
Well, first of all, I think, uh, Ms. Sageman and Ms. Radal hit on this. Uh, you know, those who are comparing, uh, the representation of the Office of Law, uh, to a divorce, are forgetting that there are attorneys who represent couples who are married. And, and that's what we are representing. We are representing a married couple. Uh, and in the event there is, uh, a situation where, uh, there is, uh, an actual conflict, uh, you could be certain that, uh, anyone who sits in the, in the chair and Ramilda's there now, uh, will certainly make the call, uh, because our license is certainly isn't worth, um, doing it any other way, uh, to make a recommendation as to how we would deal with that. But this marriage has, uh, been in effect since two thousand twelve. Uh, we have not been, I recall, on the third floor. The Office of Law does not have judicial powers. We're not, we're not like a, a state government that has a binding judiciary as a, a third branch. We're, we're the Office of Law, we make recommendations. Um, I've been, just since I've been, uh, attending the, the public meetings over the past year, uh, I've witnessed many situations where the Office of Law has made a recommendation and the majority of council, uh, didn't agree and, and the majority decided a different way. Uh, this, uh, the proposed change, uh, to the Charter, I, I guess the question is, you know, where do you end with that? Because my impression is those who have presented it or are supporting it, are supporting it because they believe that the majority went with an opinion that was recommended by the Office of Law that they disagreed with. So does that mean we're also going to have an, another attorney that's assigned to represent the minority? So now we have the Office of Law that's loaded with attorneys. You're going to have an attorney that represents the majority interest and an attorney that represents the minority. I think it, that's ridiculous. Uh, we have not gotten to the point, and we've had a few different circumstances where I believe, in my experience, uh, I know Mr. Pedri sat in the chair, Ms. Crocambe sits in the chair, where we've had very serious conversations about, uh, conflicts in the way that executive power versus legislative powers wield it. Um, we've always somehow, those situations have resolved themselves. If they don't, we'll be the first ones, uh, to declare that there is a divorce that warrants having separate attorneys. Uh, as far as writing ordinances, um, that's new to me that there, that any member of council has had any difficulty at all having anyone from our office draft, uh, draft any document that you're interested in. Uh, I could tell you that I have had conversations, uh, my, most council members, I don't know if all, but all should have my, my email address. Um, many have contacted me and asked me questions, uh, on my cell phone. I have regular conversations with, with many of you, uh, where we debate different issues that are related to interpretation of the Charter or interpretation of rules or, or whatever. And, um, so as far as the unavailability, I, I honestly cannot speak to that. I'm not aware of that. Um, Ramilda pretty much copies me on, on everything, especially since I'm, I'm here for these meetings. So if that is a problem, uh, that's something that, that this, uh, ordinance, I don't see how that, uh, how that fixes it. Or this, uh, placing this on the ballot fixes that. But, uh, we'll certainly have a conversation and, and make sure that that doesn't happen again. I mean, as far as, uh, litigation in-house, uh, and I don't, I don't even see how technically that's relevant to this. Uh, we handle a number of things in-house. There's a lot of things that we cannot handle in-house because we have insurance contracts that require that we, uh, hire counsel that is approved by the insurance company. And so, you know, I know Mr. Griffith had mentioned, uh, Elliot Greenleaf and Dean. One of the reasons why Elliot Greenleaf and Dean, uh, represents us is because when I first sat in the chair back in two thousand twelve, um, and actually as far back as two thousand nine, when I first sat in the chair, um, insurance companies were assigning us counsel from all over the state that was costing us ridiculous, uh, hourly rates. Um, I negotiated a rate with, uh, a number of local firms, uh, that was fair and that was, uh, much reduced compared to what we were paying. And, uh, so there are certain situations where we have absolutely, uh, no discretion at all uh, as to who we get for outside counsel and, uh, and whether or not we could represent the county on those cases. And again, this change to the Home Rule Charter wouldn't change that anyway. So, um, that's really all I have here.
Thank you.
And let me just echo that, uh, you know, specifically, uh, you know, you, Councilman Haas and Urban and Griffith, uh, if you have a request, uh, that you want an ordinance or resolution, uh, drafted, uh, you know, the staff that I have, uh, is very experienced, uh, between Paul Ratic and Shannon Lebskansky and Mark Mikowski. Uh, uh, they would be more than happy, uh, and that's part of their job to do that. That's part of our job as the Office of Law. I want to be clear, uh, to everybody, uh, I do not, uh, rule the Office of Law with an iron fist. I listen to my, uh, staff because they're very experienced and they're very knowledgeable. Uh, and to me, in order to get to, uh, the best legal opinion that the Office of Law can give counsel or the county manager uh, or that the departments and the divisions that make requests from us, uh, the best way to do that is with, uh, a dialogue and a conversation with, uh, my, uh, fellow solicitors. What I do though is I take responsibility for the work and the decisions that are made, uh, from the Office of Law. So, uh, I appreciate your time. Uh, and, uh, Councilman Urban, I, uh, I apologize for interrupting you. Uh, if my mother were alive, I would be in big trouble, uh, for doing that. So, uh, I just want to say to all the members of council that, uh, the Office of Law, uh, is, uh, certainly ready, willing and able. Uh, if you, you want certain work done, uh, we will do that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, my issue is, is not with, with the legal staff. You know, I, I love Shannon and Mark to death, Paul, I don't know so well, but look, it, it's, it's not personal. I just want to be very clear about that, just like with the elections issue. Nothing against our former director. It's not personal. But, you know, I brought up, I had to write my own, my own, uh, resolution for that James, that Joyce contract. Cost the taxpayers a lot of money and I, I got no support in that. And again, it, it need, we just need to be our best. And I feel like, I'm, I, I feel like I'm doing double duty and I, I just expect the same. I just expect the support. And, um, and there, there are other issues at play there. I just put that one out there because that's one that wasn't said with the other people that was supporting this amendment. Okay? So again, nothing personal, I just want the best for all of us.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just like to make one comment if I may. I would have to say that the, in my tenure as part of the member of county council, I think the Office of Law has done yeoman service, especially, uh, as we all remember in the beginning of this, uh, Home Rule. There were a lot of questions and issues and, uh, decisions that had been made because we were a young government that needed to get our legs underneath us, so to speak. And I found the Office of Law to be very helpful and positive and provide information. I have had no issues. You know, they have given me opinions that I agreed with, some that I did not. I still respect their opinions and I respect the fact that they have the legal expertise to provide those opinions. Enough said.
If I would say add to that is that this is, I agree with Harry. This isn't personal. And I appreciate your remarks. This has nothing to do with whether they can do this or not. Has nothing to do with, you know, that they have slacked off somehow on resolutions that were messed up as well, that I drafted myself because I couldn't get them right from the Office of Law. That's not the point of the resolution or the ordinance. The ordinance is so we could have separate, independent legal advice. It doesn't, that we can count on without any reservations to say, well, geez, maybe they checked with the manager first to see what they want first. Because that seems to be the problem when we try to do stuff with the position budget. Is you can't do that because that violates the charter somewhere. But really, you can't do that because that would step on the power of the manager. So those are the type of things that we have in our mind that are the problem for independent council. And that's why I think we need independent council.
Well, and, you know, opinions, and you're right, you have your opinion and everybody else has an opinion also, and they have that right, so.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
We have a motion for Mr. Urban, second by Mr. Griffith. Roll call, please. If you support the motion, we will place the question on the ballot. If you don't support the motion, it doesn't go forward. Roll call, please.
Did you say Sageman?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Motion fails. Mr. Parsnick, are you with us at this point?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we're going back up to Mr. Parsnick to number two on our agenda. There were some questions in regards to the unemployment compensation program through the County Commissioners Association. Can you update us on how the county works through that or how they work with us? What costs do we pay? Do we have more claims? How does that work?
All the counties, Mr. McGinley.
You have to turn up your volume, I think, Parsnick. It's a little bit low, I believe.
How about now?
That's better.
All the counties in this consortium participate in all the costs. There's a mod factor that each county is assigned depending on their history with claims. And in return for being part of this consortium, the unemployment claims and the administrative fees and the state filings and any time that we need representation at these hearings are paid for by the consortium. If you recall, over the last few years, our history and experience with claims has been down. So the consortium has given us a rebate for expenses that we have incurred through the consortium. And everything so far for this has been a benefit to the county. We don't have to worry about whether we miss any unemployment hearings, whether there's any administrative work or filings to the state that need to be done. It's all taken care of. And we've been in this agreement for at least the past four years.
I think it's a little bit more than that. But is there any other cost besides the cost that we have with the membership to the county association?
The only cost that comes is the mod factor that you're assigned to.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Parsnick?
Mr. Parsnick, what is the definition of a mod factor?
They factor you a cost in based on your county's experience with claims and how many you have and historically how many you've had. So then they assign you, and that would be part of what you would pay as being a member of the consortium.
So there is a fee to belong to the consortium?
Yeah, we pay a fee into the consortium as well as the other counties. And then all those costs are shared between the counties. And at the end of the year, if they tally up what all the costs are, that's how we get a rebate back.
So the statement that we don't pay a fee other than our dues to belong to the C cap is absolutely not a truth statement, correct?
No, we pay the mod cost. I don't know if the regular fee for C cap is something we already pay. That's what we pay to belong to C cap. We pay a mod cost to be part of this consortium for the unemployment fee.
And what's our fee for the mod cost?
I have to look that up, Mr. Griffith. I'm not sure what it is this year.
Can you take a stab in the dark at what you thought it was last year?
I'd have to look in the files because I know that once we get the mod cost, I give it to Budget and Finance to put into.
Is it hundred thousand? Is it ten thousand in that area?
I have to look, Mr. Griffith. I don't.
I can't support something if I don't know what it costs us.
Well, Mr. Griffith, if you, I think you know how they calculate a mod factor. They look at the previous, I think it's four years of claims and the costs involved and what they had to pay out. And they develop that mod factor from that. And every year, as you go forward, the farthest out claim drops off. So if you reduce your claims and the costs that go with those claims, your mod factor reduces appropriately. And that's how they determine the costs involved. And that's pretty common, I think, among all the insurance industry as far as.
So you know how it all works, but when I asked the question, nobody had an answer for me before.
Well, you didn't ask that mod question before.
Oh, I asked what it cost the county.
Yeah, but you didn't ask for a mod. I could have explained the mod. And I don't know what it cost the county because I don't know what the mod factor is.
But it's not just a C cap fee. That's what we were told.
You heard what Mr. Parsnick said.
Right. So it's not just a C cap fee, as we were told. So, see, this is the problem that I have with stuff being put on the agenda without having a discussed in a work session, is now we don't know how much that actually does cost. But we're going to have to vote on it because it's under the gun to get it done. And when I asked the question, what it cost, there was no cost. There was no cost. We were told there was no cost. But now there's a cost. Okay. So, see, this is the issues that I have as a council member, and every council member should have that. We don't know what this costs, but we're going to vote on it. Yeah, it may be an advantage, but just tell us what the advantages are and tell us what the cost is so we can vote intelligently. Don't tell us it doesn't cost anything and get a vote out of us and surprise us and say, oh, guess what? This costs money now. I just don't appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, Sheila. I didn't realize you were trying to.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Maybe we're saying the same thing.
If, so, Mr. McGinley, I don't know if it's for you. It might be for Mr. Parsnick or possibly even Mr. Swets. So if this is something we've been a part of for at least the past couple of years, we've budgeted for this. It's in the budget that we're paying for it this year. Is that correct?
I would say yes, but I certainly refer that to Mr. Swets or Mr. Parsnick.
Mr. McGinley, I'm sure it is in the insurance budget. And as I said before, now I provide the budget and all the division heads do work together. But I did not know the day-to-day workings of administration. And that's why I asked to defer to Mr. Parsnick.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Ms. Radel?
I think so. So it is budgeted, then?
I believe that's what Mr. Swet's confirmed.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Yep. Ms. Sageman, do you have a question?
I just want to say that whatever we pay, I'm sure that's less than going it alone. I mean, it just has to be when you're in one of these consortiums. That's the benefit of being in a consortium. So we know that it's a lesser amount. Or we probably went to stating it from the beginning.
Well, that's a legal faith.
Well, no.
I don't know what that number is, Sheila, so I don't know how we could make a statement like that.
Well, I agree with Ms. Sageman. My experience with the insurances in the past, those types of consortiums always provide savings to the people who are involved in the consortium. And there's always a reason why that consortium was formed. And you know the reasons are because it saves on costs. And then that comes back to the county. And as Mr. Parsnick indicated, you know, we have received some substantial rebates through that program that came back to the county. I believe one of them was about two hundred and twenty thousand. I think another is like a hundred and ninety thousand. But because of the consortium and the saving on the costs, we've got those rebates that came back to the county, which were, like I said before, a bonus to the county.
And I understand it, Mr. McGinley, but it would be really nice as members of council to be informed. That's all I'm saying. These hypotheticals saying, well, you know, it's got to be better. It's got to be making money. We're getting money back. All that stuff is great and wonderful. I get it. But I would like to know the numbers. I would like to be an educated council member when somebody says, why are you in the consortium? Because I'd say, because if we weren't in the consortium, it would cost us eighty thousand dollars. But we're in a consortium, so it only costs us forty. That would be a wonderful thing to be able to do. But unfortunately, we can't do that because we don't get the information.
Well, I don't think it's hypothetical, but you're, you know, the information could be provided, I'm sure. Anyone else? Okay, we had a motion for Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. McDermott, to approve the agreement to participate in the unemployment compensation program of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Trust. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain. Not enough information.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No, because there's no information.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll go back down to number eight. Motion to amend the rules and procedure of operation for Luzern County Council, last amended in May twelfth of two thousand and twenty. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? On the question. Anyone on the question?
Mr. McGinley, is this the issue with the change in the telephonic and video versus what it said?
The changes are there. They were proposed by Mr. Griffith. We talked about it in the last work session two weeks prior.
Right. Okay, I got it.
Okay. Anyone else? I would just have to say myself, I cannot agree with everything that's proposed. As a result, I cannot support that because there are sections that I think should be changed, but I think there's some sections there that are not appropriate. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Excuse me, no.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay. Going down to number nine. If you remember the last meeting, we had to correct the appointment for Ms. Urban who served on the Luzern, Wyoming County's Mental Health and Dental Services Program Advisory Board. The term that was done with a resolution was a one-year term and should have been a three-year term. So this resolution wrecked that situation. We have a motion to adopt the resolution.
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Sheila. Ms. Sageman.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving down to number ten. These are council member situations. We have a request from the Greater Hazel and Candu Board of Directors to have a member of council serve with that board. We have a motion to open up a nomination for the Greater Hazel and Candu Board of Directors.
So moved.
Who was that? Mr. Urban? Urban? Do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Second, Leanne.
Very good. Ms. McDermott, all in favor of opening nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Nominations are now open.
Present the name of Mr. Chris Perry.
Mr. Perry nominated. Do we have a second for?
Second.
Mr. Sageman? Any other nominations?
Motion to close. Excuse me.
Mr. Urban?
Second.
We have a second to close.
Sir.
Second, Linda.
Excuse me.
Ms. Houck? All in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Perry by resolution to the Greater Hazel and Candu Board of Directors?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? Question? Roll call.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Could you guys hear me?
Yep.
Excuse me, sir. Could you guys hear me?
Who is it?
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'm hearing somebody on the phone there.
Yeah, this is Jacob. Could John Duzinski speak?
Excuse me, Jason. We're in the course of the meeting. Mr. Duzinski is waiting to speak. Thank you.
Yes, he speaks now?
No. We're in the middle of a meeting, please. We have our business to finish and then Mr. Duzinski will have an opportunity. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Lawrence. Go ahead.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. We also have a council member who serves on the Woodsboro Riverfront Parks Committee. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? All in favor of opening nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. Nominations are open.
I nominate Harry Haas.
Mr. Haas by Ms. Houck. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Matt.
Mr. Vog? Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations, Kendra.
Very good. Do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Urban.
Second.
Mr. Urban, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Haas by resolution to the Riverfront Parks Committee?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question, roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hug?
Aye.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
A yes for me, yes.
Sorry. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Going over to the next page, we hit, you have an updated eligibility list. And regards to the ABCs, I want to thank the ABC group for getting all the information and having the interviews and getting the eligibility list together so that we can have a good number of people available for nominations for membership on different ABCs. We're beginning at the top there. Luzern County Convention Center Authority. Do we have a motion?
Move to open nominations. Move to open nominations, Linda.
Second vote.
Mr. Vog, who's second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. So the Luzern County Convention Center Authority, you have your eligibility list in front of you. We're open for nominations.
Present the name of Gene Rafali.
Wait a minute. Uh, I think Mr. Snee, then I think it was Mr. Haas was next. Mr. Snee, who was the name?
Mr. Gene Rafali.
Rafali? Do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? All right, Mr. Haas.
Mr. Thomas Woods.
Mr. Woods.
Second, Snee.
We have a second by Mr. Snee. Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close, Mr. Vog. Who, Ms. Radel's second?
Yes.
All in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, any extensions? None heard. Motion carries. So we have two openings and we have two nominations. So can we have a motion to appoint Mr. Rafali by resolution?
Some move, Linda.
Ms. Houk, who was second?
Sheila.
Ms. Sagan?
Yes.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Woods by resolution to the Convention Center Authority.
Some move.
Kendra.
Mr. Urban and Ms. Radel? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving down to Luzern County Flood Protection Authority, we have a motion to open up nominations.
Some move, Derby.
Mr. Urban, we have a second for Mr. Urban.
Second, Linda.
Ms. Houk? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. Nominations are open.
I nominate Mr. O'Brien.
I, one at a time, please. I, there are a couple of people.
Walter, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, Walter, Mr. O'Brien. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffiths?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Any other nominations?
Yes.
Motion to nominate Gordon Dussinger, Kendra?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Radel and Ms. Sagan, were you second on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to close nominations, Vog.
Okay, Mr. Vog, the closed nominations. Second, Vog.
Second, Linda.
All in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. We'll have a roll call. You'll indicate whether you support Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Dussinger. Please state the name of the candidate you're supporting, please. Ms. Lawrence, please, roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Dussinger.
Ms. Radel?
Mr. Dussinger?
Ms. Sedman?
Dussinger.
Mr. Snee?
Dussinger.
Mr. Urban?
O'Brien.
Mr. Vog?
Dussinger.
Mr. Griffith?
O'Brien.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. O'Brien.
Ms. Houk?
O'Brien.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Duss, Dussinger?
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Dussinger?
Four for O'Brien, seven for Dussinger.
Okay. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Dussinger by resolution to the Luzern County Flood Protection Authority?
Some move, Sheila.
Ms. Sagan? Do we have a second for Ms. Sagan?
Second, Snee.
Mr. Snee? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Just lost a lot of wisdom. No.
Yes. A lot.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to the next item. Luzern County Industrial Development Authority. And if you look at your eligibility list, there are four openings. We have four names. I want to call your attention to the fact that one of the terms would end at the end of two thousand twenty-four and three other terms will end at the end of two thousand twenty-five. That would put the alignment correct in that, uh, that authority board would have three people each year. Their, uh, term would be coming to a close. So that would make the three threes out of the nine members. So that's why you have a little adjustment in that term. But we have a motion to open nominations.
Some move, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Sagan, all in favor of opening nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Nominations are now open. Let's do the first one with the term ending in twenty-four. Okay?
Do we have to designate which term for which person?
We have to because there's four people, Mr. Griffith, three of which would get a term that would end in twenty-five, one of which would end in twenty-four. So let's do the twenty-four term first. And the other three people would be eligible for twenty-five. Somebody want to nominate someone for the term?
Nominate Karen Martinelli for the, uh, first one?
For the twenty-four?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second, Linda.
Second, and that would be Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Any other people to nominate for the term ending in twenty-four? Okay. Can we, can we have someone nominate the other three people for the term ending in twenty-five?
I move to nominate Rodney Kaiser, Brian Matilevich, Mati, Mati, Matiavich and Frank Pachewski.
Very good.
I second that.
The other three people, Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Matilevich and Ms., Mr. Pachewski would be for the twenty-five terms. Do we have a second for Ms. Houk?
Second, Leanne.
Okay, Ms. McDermott? The other?
Move to close nominations.
Ms. Houk, do we have a second for Ms. Houk?
Second, Leanne.
Second, all in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard. Motion carries. So we'll have a, uh, motion to appoint Ms. Martinelli, the term ending in twelve thirty-one twenty-four for the Luzern County Industrial Development Authority. Do we have a motion to appoint?
Some move, Linda.
Ms. Houk, you have a second. Mr. Urban? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, do we have a, a motion to appoint Mr. Kaiser, who are term ending in twenty, twenty-five?
Some move, Linda.
Ms. Houk, do we have a second for Ms. Houk?
Sheila.
Ms. Sagan? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Ms. McDermott?
Yes. Corden?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Mr. Matilevich, who are term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Some move, Linda.
Ms. Houk? Do we have a second for Ms. Houk? Who was that?
Urban.
Very good. Mr. Urban? On the que, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
We have a motion to appoint Mr. Pachewski, Pachewski, who are term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Some move, Linda.
Ms. Houk, we have a second. Mr. Urban? On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, going down to Luzern County Transportation Authority, we have two terms that will end twenty twenty-five.
Move to open nominations.
Open nominations.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table that? That we don't do any nominations to the Transportation Authority due to the life insurance issue until they clear that up?
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Sir, we have a second, no debate. We have a motion to table appointments to the Luzern County Transportation Authority. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Edman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Four aye, seven no.
Okay, the motion to table fails. Again, do we have open nominations? Do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schnee.
I want to change my vote to a yes.
A yes to table?
Yes.
Okay. The motion still fails, I believe. Correct, Ms. Houck, Ms. Lawrence?
Correct, five to six.
All right. Ms. Houck, you made a motion to open nominations. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck to open nominations?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Saban? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
No.
Two no's? Any abstentions? None heard? Motion carries? Nominations are now open.
Now I nominate Mr. Bendis.
Second.
Who, uh, who nominated Mr. Bendis?
Linda.
Ms. Houck, very good. Second for Ms. Houck?
Sheila.
Ms. Saban? Any other nominations?
I'm going to nominate Gary Polakowski, if I said that correctly.
I think you're close. Ms. Radel? Ms. Radel, who's second on that?
Vog, second.
Mr. Vog, very good. Any other nominations?
Like to move Mr. Robert Chappalonis, please.
Mr. Haas? Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Gazinski.
Mr. Richard Gazinski.
Mr. Griffith, I think, made the motion. I think, Mr. Haas, you followed with a second?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? We have a motion to close nominations. Ms. Houck made the motion to close. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried? Uh, we're going to go through and do a roll call. The goal is for the person to get to six positive in order to be appointed. We'll go down through the list as it's indicated on your sheet. Mr. Bendis first. Indicate, as we go through the roll call, indicate which of the candidates, Mr. Bendis, Mr. Chappalonis, Mr. Gazinski, Mr. Polakowski, please. Roll call, please.
Are we doing one at a time or two candidates at a time?
No, there, there's four candidates. They're going to indicate which one they're supporting.
Two?
One.
Yeah, you're going to vote for two because there's two openings.
No, we pick one seat at a time.
I, I don't think we did that in class, but that's fine. When somebody wants to pick one seat at a time, I have no problem.
Yep.
Go ahead. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Uh, you're muted, Mr. Haas.
Just one candidate. Mr. Chairman, just on Bendis.
No. You're going to indicate who you're supporting, Mr. Schnee.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Mr. Haas, ahead. Who's that?
One or two candidates, I'm sorry.
One.
One or two.
One, please.
Mr. Um, Mr. Chappalonis.
Okay. Mr. Chappalonis, go ahead. Roll call.
Ms. Houck?
Bendis.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Bendis.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Bendis.
Ms. Radel?
Mr. Bendis.
Ms. Edman?
Bendis.
Mr. Schnee?
Bendis.
Mr. Urban?
Bendis.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Bendis.
Mr. Griffith?
Gazinski.
Mr. McInley?
Mr. Bendis.
We have nine for Bendis, one for Chappalonis, one for Gazinski.
Okay, Mr. Bendis is has been, uh, with nine votes, would be a member that would be uh, pointed to the Transportation Authority. Now we'll have the second member. Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
Chappalonis.
Ms. McDermott?
Um, Mr. Polakowski.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Polakowski.
Ms. Radel?
Polakowski.
Edman?
Polakowski.
Mr. Schnee?
Polakowski.
Mr. Urban?
Polakowski.
Mr. Vog?
Polakowski.
Mr. Griffith?
Polakowski.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Chappalonis.
Mr. McInley?
Uh, Mr. Polakowski.
Nine for Polakowski.
Very good. So we have our two members, Mr. Bendis and Mr. Polakowski. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Bendis by resolution to the Luzerne County Transportation Authority.
So moved.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Chris.
That was Sheila, sorry. I, I got bumped off. I'm back.
Who got bumped off?
It was me, but Sheila made that motion. I came back in time to hear her make the motion. It was Linda. Yeah, that's okay.
Then we'll correct it. Put Ms. Saban down as making the motion. That's not a problem. Mr. Perry made the second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
I'm sorry, what's the roll call? I missed it. Could I?
What would be to appoint Mr. Bendis by resolution to Luzerne County Transportation Authority?
Thank you, okay.
Very good.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
I apologize. I want to change my vote to no for Bendis. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lawrence, please note that that Mr. Griffith changes vote to a no. We're going to Mr. Polakowski. We have a, a motion to appoint Mr. Polakowski by resolution. Do we have a motion for the resolution?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, do we have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ten yes, one no.
All right. Going down to letter E. Northeastern Pennsylvania Health and Higher Education Authority. We have one term ending in twenty twenty-five. And if you look at your eligibility list, we have only one gentleman who is listed under that eligibility list. So we have a motion to open nominations.
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Hey.
Mr. Schnee, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries? Since we have only the one gentleman to, um, fill that term, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Duraco by resolution. Northeastern Pennsylvania Health and Higher Education Authority.
Kendra?
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second.
Secondly, uh, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Radel?
Ms. Lawrence, I don't think that came across well.
Ms. Radel?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to thirteen nominations and appointments to boards and commissions under letter A, Luzerne County Conservation District Board of Directors. We have two terms that will end in the year twenty twenty-four. And if you look at your eligibility list, we have two gentlemen who would serve at those terms if they are appointed.
Move to open nominations.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck to open nominations?
Second, Kendra.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carry.
I move to nominate John Hannish and, I move to nominate John Hannish and Gary Moyer.
Okay, do we have a second for Ms. Houck and for those two nominations?
Second, Chris, second.
I think Mr. Perry got in first. All in favor, uh,
Move to.
The nominations? Do we have a, do we have a motion to close nominations?
To close nominations.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. Radel, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries? Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Hannish? By resolution to Luzerne County. Mr. Schnee?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Roll call, please.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes, I'm honored, uh, for Mr. Hannish.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Moyer by resolution.
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second.
I think Mr. Urban got in there as a second.
Three.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to letter B.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, uh, interrupt for one minute.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm hon, I'm honored that a man like Mr. Hannish who is, uh, serving Luzerne County, and the reason I'm pointing him out, the gentleman's in his eighties, he's served in two wars. The Korean War and the Vietnam War, and has a resume that's pages long. So if anybody wants, uh, that a role model should be, it's Mr. Hannish. He's created, he's done a lot of things over his years, and he's just a great man.
Thank you, Mr. Schnee.
Well, well said, and I think his resume speaks for itself. Okay. Uh, moving down to the Children and Youth Advisory Board. If you look at your eligibility list, we have nine openings. Uh, we had three names on that, and I think one person recently said they would also serve on that board, and that was Malon Nicholson. And you would find her name under Luzerne County's Mental Health and Development Services.
Move to open nominations.
Ms. Houck, open nominations, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
McDermott, all in favor, open nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried? So we actually have, uh, four names, and like I said, there's nine potential openings.
Mr. McInley, our agenda says there are three terms up.
Uh, I think that's incorrect, though. Ms. Lawrence?
Okay.
Correct on that?
Uh, no, there's, we can do four because now we have four names. When the agenda's went out, we only had three names. So even if there is nine openings, but we now have four people, so we can do four appointments.
Okay, I nominate Denise Acosta, New Yorka De La Rosa, Eileen Song, and Malon Nicholson to the Children and Youth Advisory Board.
Very good. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Move to close nominations.
Do we get a second?
Yep.
Second, Schnee.
Uh, Mr. Schnee, very good.
Move to close nominations.
Nominations, do we have a second for that?
Second, ten.
Ms. Radel, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries? So can we appoint Ms. Acosta by resolution to Luzerne County Children and Youth Advisory Board?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Is that Ms. Radel?
Uh, Leanne.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. McDermott? Uh, so we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We have a motion to appoint Ms. De La Rosa to the Luzerne County Children and Youth Advisory Board.
Chris?
Mr. Perry, I think, was in there, and who else?
Linda.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Schnee? We have a motion to appoint Ms. De La Rosa by resolution. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Song by resolution?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Sheila.
No, I think, uh, Leanne was second first.
Uh, no, that was maybe Ms. Saban?
It was Sheila.
It was Sheila? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Do we have a point of, a resolution to appoint Malon Nicholson by resolution?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second.
Second, I think, was, uh, Ms. Radell?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Um, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to letter C. Luzerne County Community College Board of Directors, we have one opening. The term ends in 2026. Do we have a motion to open up nominations?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second.
Second was Mr. Haas, I think.
Perry, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor of open nominations indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We're now open for nominations.
I nominate Erin Keating.
Second, Vog.
Erin Keating was Ms. Howke, and who was second for that, please?
Sheila.
Oh, Matt.
Mr. Vog. Okay, any other nominations?
I nominate Donna Sersa.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
A second.
Second for Mr. Griffith?
Second for.
Mr. Urban? Any other nominations?
Close nominations.
Ms. Radell, do we have a second for Ms. Radell, a close nomination? Ms. Howke, all in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. So we have two names, Ms. Keating and Ms. Sersa. Roll call, indicate which of the candidates you are supporting, Ms. Keating or Ms. Sersa. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howke?
Keating.
Ms. McDermott?
Ms. Keating.
Mr. Perry?
Keating.
Ms. Radell?
Ms. Keating.
Ms. Sedman?
Keating.
Mr. Sneak?
Keating.
Mr. Urban?
Sersa.
Mr. Vog?
Keating.
Mr. Griffith?
Sersa.
Mr. Haas?
Ms. Keating.
Mr. McGinley?
Ms. Keating?
Nine for Keating, two for Sersa.
Thank you. We have a motion to appoint Ms. Keating by resolution to Luzerne County Community College Board of Trustees.
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Saban? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Luzerne County Convention Center and Visor Bureau Board of Directors, we have one term that's completed at the end of 2021.
Move to.
Do we have a motion to open up nominations?
Move to open nominations, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second.
Mr. Urban, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any? Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, nominations are open.
Move to nominate Anthony Brooks.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Howke and, um, Mr. Urban, I believe?
Yep. Move to close nominations.
Close nominations.
Close nominations, do we have a second to close the nominations?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Since we only have the one candidate, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Anthony Brooks by resolution to the Luzerne County Convention and Visors Bureau Board of Directors.
So moved.
Kendra.
Kendra, and who's second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman. We've given each other's political campaigns in the past.
Okay.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Down to the next letter, Luzerne County Farmland Preservation Board. We have a motion to open up nominations. We have one term.
Linda.
Second, Urban.
Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries, nominations are open.
I've moved to nominate Nancy Sneak.
Uh, do we have a nomination?
Nancy Sneak?
Yes.
Second.
Second, Ms. Howke and Mr. Sneak?
Move to close nominations. Move, Linda.
Ms. Howke, second for Ms. Howke? Mr. Sneak, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Do we have a potion, a, a motion to appoint Ms. Nancy Sneak by resolution to the Luzerne County Farmland Preservation Board?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's, uh, I think Ms. Radell and Mr. Haas. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Uh, yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Letter F is the Recreation Facilities Board, and we only have one candidate, and that person is already been assigned to a different group. So we don't have any, a person to fill that position at the current time. Now we go to aging. And let's see what we have here. Okay.
Move to open nominations.
Yep, open up the nominations. Ms. Howke, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, all in favor of open nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. If you will note, we have ten terms. And if you look on our eligibility list, there are ten names.
Right. I would like to nominate Liza Behrens, Charlotte Kettler, Angel Mathis, Phyllis Mundy, Robert Nealon, Henry Panoni, William Runner, James Sernick, Donald Warren, and David Yonkey to the board.
We have a, a motion by Ms. Howke, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Radell?
Move to closed nominations.
Ms. Howke moves to close, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, all in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. So do we have a resol- resolution to appoint Ms. Behrens by resolution to Luzerne County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Uh, Radell, roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. We have a resolution to appoint Ms. Perry.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Can we possibly make a motion by unanimous consent that we could accept all of these by resolution, please?
No, we can't do that.
Why?
Ms. Howke.
That was decided years ago.
Early on, and the decision was made that they would be voted on individually at that point. We would have to change our, our bylaws to do that, Mr. Griffith.
But we can nominate them all as a pack, but we can't pass.
You cannot approve them. You cannot adopt the resolutions as a pack.
Right.
Okay.
So. I wish that were the case too, Mr. Griffith, particularly in cases like this where we have people who are willing to serve, or we have opportunities to, to, uh, put them into those memberships, but we have to follow the guidelines.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, but that's.
That's right. That's fine.
So I'm sorry, go back to Ms. Kettler, do we have a motion?
Yes, moved.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, roll call.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. We're going down to Ms. Mathis. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radell, do we have a second for Ms. Radell?
Second, Urban.
Uh, we'll give that to Mr. Urban. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Going down to Ms. Mundy.
So moved.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke? Mr. Sneak? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Do we have a resolution for, for Mr. Nealon?
So moved.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second for Mr. Nealon, for?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Uh, Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Do we have a motion for Mr. Panoni?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Do we have a motion for Mr. Runner?
So moved.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howke, roll call, please.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Sernack.
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, roll call, please.
Ms. McDerm- Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. We have a motion for Mr. Warren.
So moved.
So moved.
Is that Mr. Urban first?
Yes.
Yes.
And who was second on that?
Linda.
Ms. Howke, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We have a motion for, for Mr. Yonkey.
Yeah, so moved, Linda.
Ms. Howke, do we have a second for Ms. Howke?
Second, Sneak.
Mr. Sneak, roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
Unanimous.
Moving down to letter H. Loser in Wyoming County's Drug and Alcohol Executive Commission. If you look on your eligibility list, there's four names there, but you can see up the top there, there are categories that those people have to fall into. And at this time, the only term would be the category of medicine. We only have one name that would qualify for that category, Mr. Lefkowitz. So do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved Linda.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second?
Second Urban.
Mr. Urban, all favor of open nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition and extension unheard, motion carries. Do we have a nomination?
Yes.
I nominate Bruce Lefkowitz.
Ms. Howe nominates Mr. Lefkowitz, do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Segman. Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Move to close.
We have a second.
Second vote.
Second, Ms. McDermott. All favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any extensions, unheard, motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Lefkowitz by resolution to Loser in Wyoming County's Drug and Alcohol Executive Commission? Who was the first person there?
Let Kendra do it.
Kendra? You're the second, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Radel's the... Made the motion, Ms. Howe made the second. Roll call please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to letter L. Aye, aye, I guess. Loser in County, Wyoming County Mental Health and Development Services Program Advisory Board. You'll notice that we have one term that is associated with the category of community group. We have one term associated with religion and one term associated with education. If you look at your eligibility list, Ms. Nicholson has been appointed to children and youth, so she's not eligible for this appointment. And you can see what the other candidates, where they are categorized.
Move to open nominations.
Ms. Howe moves to open, do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second Urban.
Mr. Urban, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any extensions, unheard, motion carries.
I move to nominate... I nominate Linda Armstrong, Craig Mark, and Tom O'Neill.
Yeah, but we want to do it in categories, right?
Right. Linda Armstrong for community groups, Craig Mark for religion, and Tom O'Neill for education.
Good, very good. Do we have a second for Ms. Howe for those three nominations and the three categories?
Second Urban.
Ah, who was that, Ms. McDermott?
No, Ken Burden.
Is that right? Okay. Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved Linda.
Linda, sue second?
Second Urban.
Mr. Urban, all favor closing indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any extensions, unheard, motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Linda Armstrong by resolution to Loser in Wyoming County's Mental Health and Development Services Program Advisory Board?
So moved.
That was Mr. Urban?
Yep.
Do we have a second? Ms. Howe? Roll call?
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Craig Mark by resolution to the Loser in Wyoming County's Mental Health and Development Services Program Advisory Board.
So moved Urban.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
So moved, so seconded Linda.
Roll call please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good, we have a motion to appoint Mr. O'Neill to Loser in Wyoming County's Mental Health and Development Services Program Advisory Board.
So moved Urban.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Second Kendra.
Mr. Radel, Ms. Radel. Roll call please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. It's now ten minutes after ten, what I would like to do is at least take a five minute break so everybody can catch their breath. I'm going to look at the work session agenda. There's a couple items I think we should at least acknowledge and cover. A couple items I think we can probably postpone tonight because of the hour. So if everybody would take a five minute break, we reconvene at ten fifteen.
We need to do public comment.
We will get to the public comment, we're not going to miss that. But we're going to take a five minute break right here in order for everybody to take a little... Be able to go to a laboratory, catch a drink, or whatever they need at this point, but we will come back for public comment.
Excuse me ma'am. We're currently on a five minute break, they're going to go back to public comment afterwards. Alright, thank you.
Listen to what I'm going to say. Alright, it's quarter after ten, and I know that was a short break. And I know we spent several hours already. What I would like to do is, there's two items in the work session that I think we should get the reports on. The first one is the CARES funding, because I know that Manager Pedri has scheduled a press conference tomorrow, and I think it's appropriate that county gets the information tonight. And then we'll have Mrs. West make a brief report. And any questions, then he can take and provide the answers to you through the email or next time we meet. Any issues with that from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Jones with the zoning office. Are you recommending that the zoning item be postponed to a later time?
Yes, because I think we're going to spend a good deal of time with all those items that you have listed there. And I don't want to, at quarter after ten or ten thirty at night, be trying to go through that, Mr. Jones.
Well, if the council agrees to that, I can dismiss my gang, and we can make ourselves available for whenever you would like to discuss that item later.
Next meeting, and you'll be the priority in the next meeting.
Okay.
Any problem from council? Okay, Mr. Pedri? Mr. Pedri? Mr. Pedri, are you muted?
I'm with you here, how are you?
We're good. I would like you to give your summary report of the CARES, please.
Let's go, I'll move it pretty quick as best I possibly could. Jared, do we have my PowerPoint? Thank you so much. Alright, council, thank you for, you know, your hard work tonight. It's a long, it's a long day, long time, but you're doing your work. And let's move forward with the CARES funding. So, next slide, please. So, what is the CARES funding? The county received about twenty-eight point six million dollars on July fifteenth. We deposited into segregated accounts. Community Development also received about two million dollars for housing and urban development. Council approved this ordinance on July twenty-eighth for the 2020 budgets. And per DCED, these are the guidelines that DCED has set forth as to exactly what the CARES funding has to be utilized for, could be utilized for. The biggest thing about this, and like, I'm just going to wrap it up into, I mean, there's all these different little points, but the biggest thing about it is plan for, prepare for, respond to coronavirus, and it has to be spent by December thirtieth. That was the biggest part of this entire process. So, we started the process of moving forward with this grant, and let's move forward to the next slide. So we started with the county projects. The county was able to complete numerous projects related to the coronavirus in order to keep our facilities operating as well as to follow CDC guidelines. So we did PPE, we bought masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, remote work supplies. Our IT department got laptops, scanners, webcams, video conferencing, cleaning supplies, air purifiers, thermometers, all the things now that, unfortunately, we've now lived with these things for close to a year, that we just think that this is just the way it's always been, but all those things had to be purchased. And that was the part of the process to keep our employees and our visitors safe at Loser in County. Now, some of the larger projects that we did, the first thing is the Command Center Decontamination Unit. That's for all emergency vehicles for emergency management agency. This center can be utilized at a testing site, at hopefully a vaccination site, and any future emergency issue that we would have moving forward. We did the outside structures to socially distance people when visiting and leaving the courthouse and central court. Now, you'll see these as you enter the back entrance to the courthouse, but I want to be clear, they look like, kind of like, almost like sheds. But what's nice about them is that those are not permanent structures, and they can be utilized when hopefully this pandemic is over, can be moved somewhere else. We did upgrades to LCCF for quarantine space, including the gym project. And we did the installation of a Polycom area to limit transportation to the courthouse. The Polycom area is a really interesting idea. We're bringing two prisoners at a time over to this Polycom area where they are given hearings. And they're going to listen to those hearings, and then they move, and then they go back to the prison. This limits their transport, we don't have to have people coming in and out of the prison, it works out very nicely altogether. Obviously, the courtroom technology, the courts, Paul Heimars, President Judge Michael Vog, has done some really creative things to make sure that they're keeping their people safe and secure. Storage facility to house our PPE and other public service items. We did materials for testing sites, touchless entries for restroom facilities, as well as online access for a bunch of different departments, because let's be honest, everything's moving to online. We upgraded our campus system, sheriff's department, district attorney's office, our e-signature program for some of our contracts. These are some of the things that we were able to utilize. And go to the next slide? So, the biggest portion of the funding went to the county, now that was about eight point six million dollars. Now, per DCED guidelines, the Loser in County General Fund could be reimbursed for the following. The first is five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for salaries for employees who were able to assist in elections. These are employees that I had to assign over to the 2020 Election Bureau for the 2020 primary and general, that are not election staff. So their salaries came out to five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition, we can be reimbursed, the County General Fund, for five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is for COVID sick leave and FMLA. And we could also be reimbursed about one point five million dollars for, this is a percentage of the county first responder salaries. Not their full amount, but just for a percentage as to what they would be responding to for regards to coronavirus. And finally, about six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in purchases that we're able to reimburse ourselves after we got the money. So the total is about three point three million dollars. That council has a good decision to make. So at the next meeting, we're going to be sitting down with county council, and we're going to be going over the budget amendment ordinance that we're going to be presenting to you. You have three point three million dollars to allocate to whatever fund you deem necessary. I would recommend a capital fund or the reserve fund. I think either one of those, you know, needs, you know, a review. Our current capital fund has about one point three million dollars in available funding, that's quickly dwindling. And the reserve fund as well, I know is always a part of council's review. So let's move forward to the next slide. So here's some pictures of the facilities that we had, the outside structure, the decontamination unit, the command center, storage facility as well. And let's move to the next one. And here's some pictures of the courtrooms now, how they look. You know, it's kind of a funny juxtaposition with the technology next to the beautiful, you know, wooden panels that we have there, but this is what we have to do. And those are pictures of the arena that was set up for, there were a couple trials held at the arena, as well as jury selection during the pandemic. Obviously, we want to thank our friends at the Mohegan Sun Arena, Will Beekman and his crew, because they had to cancel all of their events, so they were able to fill that space now. Fortunately, or maybe unfortunately, we've had to make other accommodations for March, because it looks like the Penguins are going to be able to start to play, which is a good news project for everybody. Moving forward to the next slide. So we also took a large portion of our money, and we provided it to municipalities, directly to our municipalities. So there were seventy-six municipalities in Loser in County, and we called them all. And about, not about, seventy of them took us up on our offer for the CARES funding. Six municipalities declined the CARES funding. The allocation for each municipality is fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents per residence. And the way it worked was municipalities needed to show allowable expenses prior to reimbursement. So they actually had to purchase the items, send us a cancel check, and get that information back to, and get back to the county prior to getting reimbursed. So some examples that we have are the Avoca Borough did computer equipment PPE, Laughlin Borough, you see what they did. Black Creek Township did cleaning supplies, air purification systems. And Kingston Borough in Wokesbury City, because they're more of our populous areas, got a larger amount of funding. And they were actually able to purchase emergency response vehicles to respond to the current pandemic. Kingston Borough, it was only went to a portion of the truck, I think that the borough actually put in a large portion of it as well, but also Wokesbury City was able to get an emergency response vehicle out of this. And we have pictures of those two. And so we'll move to the next slide as well. So the next thing are school districts. Okay, so we helped out municipalities, we took care of county projects, let's try to help the kids if we can. There were twenty-three school districts participating in the program, allocated fifteen dollars per student.
Mr. Pedri, I think you're cut off.
I think his session dropped here.
Okay. Does he realize that, Jared? Can he, is he able to realize that?
I texted him. Mr. McInley.
Thank you.
Well, I think you can see from the schools district slide what some of the school districts were able to use the monies for. Jared, you want to go to the next slide?
He said his battery is off, he has to try to get back in on his phone.
Yeah, we'll go and we'll continue along till he gets back with us. Sports nonprofits, you can see that there was twenty-seven local youth groups organization that participated. And you can see what they were spending their funding on, PPE, cleaning supplies, some bleachers to add for the social distancing. Veterans and community groups, eighteen veterans groups and other organizations that were eligible for funding. And of course, our library system, which we know is throughout the whole county, they were able to get a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar funding from the CARES. And you can see they used that for the PPE and supplies that they needed in order to have a safe environment for their employees and their visitors to their facilities.
Want to back in?
Yes, you are, and you're going to the next slide, economic development, Mr. Pedri.
Let's keep moving, sorry, I changed my laptop went out, so I went on to my iPad here, here we go, economic development. Diamond City Partnership, we work with them on a bunch of different things that we can try to get done here for their projects as well, and you'll see things that they did. Moving to the next slide. Hazleton Chamber got about two hundred forty thousand dollars for their expenses. Wokesbury Chamber as well, did some really interesting things with regards to the job fair and the project evolve as well. They were trying to identify solutions and align external innovations as well. And then they obviously did the shop small process as well. And moving to the next slide. The tourism did a phenomenal job with their marketing campaign. So this campaign was all encompassing, including print ads, locally and across Pennsylvania, social media, search engine marketing, web connected, connected TVs. The whole idea behind this marketing campaign was to bring people into Loser in County, to visit Loser in County basically outdoors, wide open spaces. And you'll see the incredible things that Teddy Wample and his team did here. They brought over a hundred thousand more clicks to our website. They reviewed over a million times our connected TV and had over three million impressions with display marketing. And moving to the next slide. Tourism as well, we are also able to help out our fairs and festivals. The Downtown Piston Partnership, Fine Arts Fiesta, all of those funding, we able to fill in their spaces as well for their COVID-related matters, as well as ticketed venues. The ticketed venues, we're able to support if they lost a percentage of their canceled shows. So they had to stop the canceled shows. And we had to, we're able to fund a portion of, give money back to them in order to keep their process going, so that they will be there when this pandemic's over, and you'll see them there. And on to the next slide. Small business and nonprofits. Now, this was the biggest piece of this. Small business and nonprofits, we were able to help out over six hundred seventy-nine small businesses and seventy-four nonprofits, a total of nine point eight million dollars. This was an incredible lift by John Augustine and his friends at Penns Northeast. Penns Northeast handled this entire program. You know, the county, we gave them the DCED guidelines, but we did not want to be a part of selecting exactly which business got the funding or anything along those lines. We just said, just follow the law as to exactly what the DC guidelines are. And the most important thing is, if you are eligible for grants under this, you are able to get that grant. That's impressive, and I'm very happy about that. And hopefully our small businesses will be able to weather the storm and get back at it when we get this vaccine up and running. And to the next slide. So this is the total overview, as you can see, the twenty-eight point six million dollars. All of this information will be presented on our county website tomorrow. You'll have a listing of every single dime that went out on the county website to every single business that we gave money to, to every single municipality, to every single thing that we provided. All that information will be on the county website tomorrow as we move forward with this. But I want to sit down with county council and see, these are the items that we set forth. I want to thank county council for working with us. As you can see, we did some phenomenal things with this CARES funding, hopefully there'll be another round at some point. Hopefully there'll be another round at some point. Uh maybe not, uh my staff will be too happy with me on that. I want to thank Brian Swets and Daniel Cunningham as well. Those two individuals did all this accounting work in the middle of budget season on all this extra stuff to make sure that that was done correctly. Michelle Sparage, Andy Riley, her did a phenomenal job getting through all the information. Working with 76 municipalities is not easy, but they did it. So um with that being said, I'll, I'll set up for questions if they have any. If not, email me. All this inform- all this information will be up tomorrow.
Yeah, this will, the presentation will be up tomorrow. Uh you're going to have a press conference tomorrow, correct?
Correct, correct. It'll be a press conference.
There'll be media coverage, I'm sure of that, et cetera. Uh any questions, please email them to manager Pedri. And thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the information. I think the program went very well and hopefully we were able to help a lot of different uh organizations, businesses and private nonprofits, et cetera. It was really a, a great effort on part of many people.
What, 1:00 PM tomorrow at the arena. If anybody would like to join us, feel free. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Swets, you want to give a, a quick summary of your budget report, sir?
Sure, Mr. McGinley.
Mr. McGinley, I have a question for Mr. Pedri. Well, I mean, that's why we're on the call here.
I understand, but you also, you'll have a chance to answer the question.
Then don't put so much stuff on the agenda, but I have a question for Mr. Pedri.
What, what did you say, Mr. Griffith?
I said that we, we shouldn't put so much stuff on the agenda if we're going to be running late and, and tell people we can't.
We have a lot of work to do, Mr. Griffiths, and I think that's our requirement to get the work done so the county can move forward. So I apologize if you think it's too much, but I think it's worth it.
It's 11 o'clock. It's not too much for me, but I, I want to have my opportunity to speak at the council meeting.
You will have your opportunity. You've had your opportunity.
Okay, well.
Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. I'm just going to highlight the one sheet, uh the council questions. So just to reiterate some of the things we said at prior meetings, again, I will take any emails after this. Uh as Mr. Pedri said, we will be getting together uh agenda submittals and draft ordinances or resolutions. I'll leave that to the Office of Law. I'm not the expert on that. For county council on dollars available and where they can be moved, uh we'll have that ready for the next meeting. Uh I think for the council questions, just a couple of things. Number one, from the CARES funding, I believe Mr. Urban had asked a few meetings back. One of the requirements was that it could not be previously budgeted. Uh so it couldn't be previously budgeted project, so it was no capital funds. Uh one of the other questions, Mr. Griffith had asked was about the audit and it, it's in your pocket, but just to give a high level. Uh again, any surplus we have plus any of the reserve we don't use goes to the bottom line. Uh so we budgeted roughly 472,000 in reserve plus the 500,000 or so that I think we're going to have. Uh as I said before, our hard close is the 12th, the next council meeting will be before that. So we'll have updated numbers and council will be able to act before the year's close. Uh finally, on the borrowed items, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, council at that time for the 911 project, cut a million dollars worth of funding. The Dominion contract in and of itself was 3.6 million. 2.8 was for machines, which we did get reimbursed for some. And there was about 200,000 a year for the service contract for the machines. So I've spelled out in there what the contract was, how much money we have and why I think we should keep the money. If council is going to do anything, uh I would suggest moving money from either the CARES fund and not touching the individual funds. I will get checked with D C D and the orders before next meeting. Uh again, we don't want to put council in a situation where we're going to move money and then it's not allowed. So my team's been working on this stuff, uh day to day audit, 1099s. But just to give council a quick update, we will have resolutions for you if that's, if they are resolutions and submittals for next week related to 2020. I'm worried we're going to end the year.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, what's your question?
Um I have, my question was the uh on, for Mr. Swets is when we do the budget amendment, is it possible that we can make a budget amendment for the, for the 3.3 million dollars for the TRAN or for the um uh the loan for the uh reimbursement of voting machines? Would you please have someone draft that so council could adopt that?
We could, we will write, we will have something for you. We'll have something on the CARES. We can have something on the voting machines. Uh and we'll have so- anything else uh that, that we deem ready, uh we'll have for you. It'll probably be two or three resolutions.
Yeah, it, well, they'd be ordinances for budgets, right, to transfer money from the line item to pay the debt?
Uh like I said, I would check with the Office of Law. I'm, I don't, I don't know which one without looking. So we'll have the information ready for council to vote on. We'll make sure it could be done for 2020. And we can have a discussion then, but we'll definitely get it to you well before the meeting. It'll be in your pocket, so if anybody has any questions, uh they can get to Budget and Finance well before the meeting.
Okay, so I can expect to see an ordinance at the next meeting for that transfer?
We will have something together for you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Can I speak now?
Uh. We're now at public comment. Who's the gentleman who just spoke?
John Dzinski.
Go ahead, Mr. Dzinski.
I, I want to go on the record. I want to go on the record and say, I spent 10 years in National Guard. I served the community as a volunteer firefighter for years. Now I'm being uh discriminated against account by the county. My children are youth. And I'll tell you what, first off was I'm white. I'm a man. And you don't believe my religious beliefs or my political beliefs. I would like to the employees there put on a leave until a further investigation is done by an outside source, by the FBI or the Attorney General's Office.
Mr. Dzinski, uh where do you reside? What community, please?
Kingston, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Dzinski?
Yeah, I, I'd like Brian Edwards to put on a leave and uh Matt Lieback until a further investigation is done.
Anything else, Mr. Dzinski?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to somebody off the record, the camera here.
You want to speak to somebody off camera, you said?
Off the camera, yeah.
Okay, I would suggest that you talk to the uh county manager. He's in charge of day to day operation.
How do I get a hold of him?
Uh, there's a, there's a phone number or an email that you can uh send information to or call.
Give me an email. I'll set up a meeting to talk to you.
Okay, Mr. Pedri said, send him an email, please.
County dot manager, loserandcounty.org.
County dot manager, loserandcounty.org.
You got it.
All right, and next to you?
Next to me.
All right, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Okay, Mr. Raybo is first and then the other gentleman that was coming on. Mr. Raybo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm not surprised, but I'm very disappointed and disheartened by this meeting for a few reasons. Number one is I can't imagine why, what is so uh fearful or, you know, so worrisome about the majority of council allowing for the county residents at large to decide, you know, how the uh charter, you know, is decided on any amendments to the charter. I think, I think uh it is very disillusioned and very uh disingenuous for any member of council or it in uh that sympathetic to the courthouse uh insiders to say that there is, that we are all one big happy family kumbaya, holding hands and, you know, uh shouting peace and love and happiness and all this other stuff, but uh that is not uh the case here. We need equal consideration for the courthouse insiders, the relatives and friends of the state legislators group as well as the rest of the county residents. That is the underlying root cause of why we don't have equality and uh, you know, equal consider- you know, in terms of equal consideration and uh listening in terms of different thoughts and di- different viewpoints uh throughout this county. I wish it weren't the, that weren't the case, Mr. Chair, but that is the case throughout this county and the pandemic is just uh infinitely highlighted and amplified uh that uh to be the truth. And uh to close it off, Mr. Chair, I think that uh the opinions given by the Office of Law uh are in direct conflict with the election code and uh that uh they are not the final deciders as Solicitor DeLuca says. They are, it's the court system that is the final decider and uh that's why we have judges to decide any kind of uh disagreement. So I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
There was someone else who wished to speak?
Ronald Knapp.
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
I like to uh echo what uh Mr. Carr just stated.
Uh that was Mr. Raybo.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Raybo. Uh I get names mixed up. Um thank you for the correction, Chairman McGinley. Uh and most uh important thing was uh, uh when people uh of, of council uh in regards to uh my definition of a divorce in regards to uh the nays and yays, well, the solicitor um um the council and the solicitors uh had their say on this meeting. And the nays for solicitor for Loser and County Council. If, if he, if one was present, he would have had, or she would have had her opportunity to defend uh the uh yays uh in, in respect to the people who felt that there was a necessity for, of all things, the Loser and County citizens to vote on it. Okay, that was the primary thing, is to put on the ballot for the residents of Loser and County to vote on it. All right, now, as to another important topic that, that I uh feel is important, I directed Loser and County members an email that indicates reasoning behind exploring the possibility of a study into the benefits to an incinerator facility for refuse disposal and energy that is produced by a facility. In the email, it supplied a link which shows the operation in Loser and Ca- uh Lancaster County, PA. Also, a video was available to view a tour of the facility. I hope that all Loser and County Council personnel as well as the manager might have uh visually looked at that video. The most important thing to stress is this is 99% within DEP guidelines. The pros out of, outweigh the cons. The facility even uses treated waste from a local sewer authority to cool the trash and tumblers, which in turn produces steam to generate electricity for 30,000 ohms. I spoke with the DEPA, DEP agent, and by the way, he gave me permission to record him. He stated, if it worked in one county, he cannot see why it could not work in Loser and County if it is directed through the strictest regulatory measures. My perception of this technological advancement, which has been in operation since 1991, has proven to be a good, be a look into the 21st century. I would even go as far as to suggest that with a new administration in office in Washington DC and President Biden's vying for green environments, it is possible grants or funds for a project like this would most likely be appreciated by the administration and might very well fund such an undertaking. The very need for a facility like this in our area is more than evident. All the warehouses in the area produce metric tons of trash from compactors and all that waste could be put into fueling firegrew steam to turn turbines to create electricity. The overabundance of natural gas in the region is there to start the fire and from there, the trash does the rest. Warehouses as well, restaurants produce trash that is driving up the cost of refuge for our local municipalities and the residents because of transportation costs. And from what I understand, it is being hauled all the way out in Sisran. With the increase of refuge, some of the residents of Loser and County are finding more cost effective to throw their refuge out along our highways than along with their spent furniture. Let us be honest, the situation is not going to get any better.
Could you wrap that up?
Committees like New Grassroots Committee are trying to stay on top of litter solution being discarded out along our highways and streets. But when collected, the municipalities are then charged for the tons of trash at the refuge collections. One last paragraph. Thank you for your patience. I could go on and on with the plight we are facing. But for Loser and County Council to initiate an RFP to attract private company that would like to work with DEP through all the steps to start the investigation into such an endeavor would be in the best interest of Loser and County residents as well as the environment for which we are all of steward of. I believe it is time we act appropriately to slow the plight. We are seeing accumulating both trash and property buildings because of rising costs. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Other members of public?
Ryan Dwyer from Marshall.
Mr. Dwyer, go ahead.
Uh I'd like to thank council for staying to this late hour and doing the job that they were voted to do. I do appreciate that. Uh I do not appreciate, would like to echo the sentiments of my other co-residents of Loser and County. We're all big boys. Put the stuff on the ballot. We can make, read a ballot uh initiative and make an educated choice on it. You guys sat there and decried that people on the election board were educated enough and of the common citizenry of Loser and County and that they should be able to run that office. Well then, by that same standard, put the measures on the ballot. We all should be able to read a ballot and make an educated choice on the vote. I really don't appreciate you guys not putting that stuff on there. The members who proposed that stuff were voted on that council by residents of Loser and County because they felt they shared their views or pushed the views that they wanted to see in their government. That's your job. Put the measures on the ballot. Thank you.
There's another gentleman, I believe, trying to uh speak.
Yeah, this is Mark Darzo.
Hello, Barry.
Uh first, Mr. Mantha and Mr. Darto.
Are we done with the bonus section yet?
Mr. Mantha?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, it's your turn.
There's somebody banging stuff around.
I hear it, but uh you know, I wish they would use their microphone, but Mr. Mantha, you're up.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, I'd like to echo again what I said earlier. I don't know why that county council thinks that the public cannot make their minds up. I, I, I'm, I'm under this impression that the, the people that the Magnificent Seven that sit on the county council uh echoes the same vote every time, every time. And I, I, I just don't understand why people don't want to change. I mean, it's not written in stone that the county council rules and regulations can't be changed. They can change for the betterment of the people, not for the betterment of the establishment. And, and my concern is if you don't let people vote on it when it's your turn to get voted in, you're going to be voted out. So the people have the right to remove you from office. And why don't they have the right to vote on items that are brought up at the meeting? I, I'm really disappointed in, in this whole meeting because it shows me that you people can't look at yourself in the mirror and say, you did the right thing. I, I, I'm, I'm disheartened. I really am. I'm, I, 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 I don't even know what to say because of the fact that the freedom of speech is being stifled. And I fought for that for 35 years in the military. And I know you're probably getting tired of hearing me saying it, but I defended this country for freedom of speech and you people are stifling. for freedom of speech. And you people are stifling the freedom of speech for people that are in this county. My gosh, look at some of these other places. And look at some of the other counties. Don't just put blinders on and say, this is the way it has to be done. This is the way it has to be done. Let's open our minds up. And it's not kumbaya, believe me. It shows it every time people vote.
Thank you. Mr. Darto?
You're welcome. Good evening. Good evening, council, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to express my thoughts tonight. I'm asking, Mr. Chair, is it okay to say the name of councilmen who tried to different, defamation my name and character on, on social media? Is it okay?
I'm not quite sure what your question is, Mr. Darto.
All right. Councilman Matthew Vog had defamation my name, slander my name, along with Ron and Nat on social media. In previous meetings, it has been hushed. I was in the conclusion of past meeting, I believe that county council should be held at a higher standard than the public at large. In the case I'm referring to is when council members spoke out in free speech against another on Facebook. And in the conclusion of this circumstances, there was standards set for betterment of Luzerne County government. In the case of Matthew Vog stated on Facebook at myself and Mr. Ron and Nat is at search. Darto and Nat conducted an interview on the way home from the, from the rally at the Capitol. These two are not trying to overthrow our local government. This nonsense needs to stop. My participation at the peaceful protest was just as was Mr. Nat. Because of his post, because of his post, it drew attention of law enforcement and to visit at my property. He Vog filed a false police report, Vog and Mary Ann Ballad, which in turn involved the federal and state officials to pay me a visit.
Okay, Mr. Vog, Mr. Darto, would you wrap up, please?
No, I'm not done yet. Can you hold on for a second, please?
Would you wrap up, please?
That's what I'm doing. Thanks for the interruption. There's a lot of resources that could have been used in all the more serious issues. It is, it is a crime to file such claims to draw attention to people who were just practicing the right to free speech. Councilman Vog should be reprimanded for his attempt at defamation of myself and Mr. Ron and Nat.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not done yet.
No, you reached your time, past your time limit, Mr. Darto. I think you may. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
We have another person from public place? Who's that?
Yes, Chairman, it's Mary Malone from the city of Hazleton. I really just wanted to say thank you very much. I'm the president of the Greater Hazleton Chamber of Commerce and representing my colleagues from the other county chambers, not only to survive the pandemic, but the money's allotted through the County Cares Act will also set those businesses, all of them small businesses, as county manager said, to, to be able to not only survive, but to thrive and to make big impacts on our area. So just wanted to, to stay on to say thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Mary None, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move, please.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radell, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. In opposition and the abstentions not heard, motion carried. Please drive safe, be careful with the weather and please stay healthy with the virus, with the new strains. I wish everybody good luck and try to get your shot wherever available, anybody is eligible. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good evening, good night, everyone. Don't forget the RFP.
Good night.
Night.